Um, Ms. Wells?
Here.
Ms. Tabachnik?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Ms. Langallis?
Here.
And Mr. Shulman?
Here. And I'm going to seat Ms. Tabachnik for the duration of the meeting. And should Hector be able to get on, so I don't have to go through this again, he'll be seated as well, since we're missing some members. Okay, we're going to follow the agenda. I know there had been a request to address Norwalk Center LLC first, but we have a number of other smaller projects that are on the agenda. And just as we did last week, I want to try and move those along, so we can devote the balance of the evening to Norwalk Center LLC. Our first item, review and action on new and pending applications. Twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven CAM William and Jillian Graves, fifty-two Samus Street, modification to conditions of approval for a single-family residence. Is there someone here representing the Graves?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Dan Conlon. I'm the architect for the project for the Graves. We had, this project is a new residence constructed at fifty-two Samus Street. It was the subject of a CAM approval back in two thousand and twenty-two. And at the time of the approval, the commission made a condition of installing a new sidewalk on the property as part of our CAM approval. And we're coming to you tonight to try to have that condition removed for a couple of reasons. Number one is we were never sure that the commission actually had the authority to make that kind of a condition on the property, given that there is no requirement in this zone for sidewalks. And we feel like that's something that maybe should be addressed on a policy level in your regulations or by your planning commission, as opposed to just doing it on individual applications. And secondly, the property next door was the subject of a recent CAM approval with the same set of conditions that we have for our property, and they were not required to put in a sidewalk. So it seems that we're virtually guaranteed that this will be a sidewalk to nowhere because the commission had the opportunity to extend that to the next property and didn't do it. And so, so putting a sidewalk in is sort of fruitless at this point. And I would mention in addition that we're right in the middle of Samus Street, in the middle of the block. I did a survey walking around the neighborhood and took some aerial photographs. And looking at other sidewalk systems in the neighborhood, we're about two hundred and fifty feet from the nearest sidewalk, which is on the east side of Bluff Avenue and goes across the bridge over to Bell Island. And we're about seven hundred and fifty feet from a sidewalk system that ends at the intersection of Highland and McKinley Avenue. So, you know, over time, we would need to, for that to be a useful sidewalk, it would have to extend over a great number of properties. And so while we recognize the commission certainly has the authority to grant conditional approvals, it seems to us that the sidewalk is really not germane to the goals of the CAM regulations. And so we respectfully request that the condition be removed.
Steve, could you comment on that first comment that Mr. Conlon made?
Specific to jurisdiction?
Yeah.
It's a good question. I mean, it wasn't, obviously, if it was a new subdivision application, you have much broader powers to do so. It's not uncommon, though, for the commission to apply that condition as part of CAM applications. I've seen it done numerous times. I think the broader question is whether, on this particular issue, given the light was approved and noted on for the other property, whether you feel it's relevant or not, and then make the decision.
I have an opinion.
Sure.
Hi, Mr. Conlon. I, I respect what you are suggesting. However, this has been an ongoing problem. I was on the planning commission before. It was the Planning and Zoning Commission. And there were a number of times when the sidewalk requirement was waived in a new construction. And subsequently, four or five houses in a row were actually taken down on some, on one street in particular that really needed sidewalks. And if, if the planning commission at that time had not waived those, there would be a nice sidewalk for pedestrian safety. I think the difference between your application and the application next door is that was just a lift. It was not a total new construction teardown. And while that house might not be torn down anytime soon, the house to the right of yours might be torn down and a sidewalk would go in there, and then that would make pedestrians that much closer to the sidewalk at the end of Highland Avenue. The city is-
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, the city is really trying to make more pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. And even though yours might be, you know, a little island in the sea of no sidewalks, in the long run, there might be other sidewalk, you know, connections, and it's important to get pedestrians off the street. That your street happens to be a heavily pedestrian street, and it is flat and has good sightlines, but still, I would strongly urge you to put the sidewalk in for those reasons.
Okay, well, I would argue a couple of things. Number one is that really the difference between a lift and a new construction, there really isn't any in my mind in a CAM application. You were looking at all of the same issues that you looked at with our construction. And we happen to be a new build. They happen to be a lift, but it was the same. The fact that that house is being renovated sort of guarantees, from a practical point of view, that the sidewalk will have no connection in that direction for a period of, take a guess, ten years or something like that. So it's going to be a funny island in the middle of nowhere. And also, the other point I'd like to make is that your regulations were just completely rewritten, and this zone has no sidewalk requirement, and there would have been a great opportunity to do that at the time of those regulations being rewritten. And it did look through the new regs, and they are pretty strong in terms of sidewalks in certain zones, in certain areas. But this zone isn't one of them. So, so that would be our argument, that this will be a pointless sidewalk to nowhere.
Steve, did you want to say something about that?
Yeah, and I don't have, unfortunately, I don't have a browser open to show the section, but there is a clause in the regulations which requires new developments to place those in. So I think the commission has the authority, if you so choose to do.
On a single ladder or in a development?
In, per the definition of development.
Ask a question. Is there, is there a place? I know I saw recently a road paving scheduled for the next few years. Is there a similar schedule that Norwalk has for sidewalks being put in? And if so, do we know when the street is on it? Like, is this, I, I fully, I'm with the argument, like, it's got to start somewhere. And it may be that this house is one of the earlier ones on the street, but is it the case that this street will only have a sidewalk by way of the piece at which houses are torn down and rebuilt? Or are a few houses going to get torn down and rebuilt, and at some point, the city's going to step in?
Yeah, you know, I would go further. I walk on that street with some frequency. And if nothing else, a sidewalk is a little safety area as the cars come down the street. Rather than jumping on someone's plantings, landing on a piece of concrete works for me. Again, in terms of the aesthetics, maybe it will look a bit silly. But I, I don't, I don't see that as a problem. I don't see it as an issue for the homeowner. It's not really going to affect property values at all. And it does become a landing point. If you're walking along the street and there's a lot of bicycle traffic on that street, it's a fair amount of car traffic, given that it's a small street as well.
So, as the homeowner, can I make a comment? As the homeowner, can I make a comment?
Pardon me?
I'm the homeowner. Can I make a comment on that?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure. So I'm Will Graves. I've lived in the property for ten-plus years. My wife, Jillian, grew up next door to it. So we know Samus Street quite well. There's actually only really four properties there. The sidewalk that is over eight hundred, you know, feet, you know, coming down Bluff, it dead-ends, and it ends there. And then there's a very large property with a lot of curb and grass, and that's forty-four Samus. And so nobody walks on that lawn, and it's a wide-open space. And then that comes up to fifty Samus, which is family members of ours. We know extremely well. And again, there's, there's no plan or change coming where that property would have a sidewalk. And so you're talking about eight hundred, nine hundred, eight hundred feet there, where there isn't going to be a sidewalk. And then you'd have our smaller property with a pretty short thing. That's fifty-two Samus. And then fifty-six Samus is the raise that just went up, which is more than a raise. It's basically an entire facelift of the property. It went back. It did, it did all sorts of things, but there's absolutely no change to their sidewalk. So you're talking about a very short stint where people, you know, may exit the road and come onto our property just to get kicked back out again, if they're avoiding grass. And then the corner place, which actually I think is a Bluff Avenue address, you know, they have a corner and it's all grass with a fence line. So, I mean, it is, I get the concept. I get the fundamental view that, you know, we want increased sidewalks in the community. But this is somewhat a ridiculous way to do it, and I think it'll be a stranded sidewalk for years to come.
If, do you or is there, I don't know, friends here, does anybody know the answer to the question I raised about the city sidewalk plans?
I couldn't tell you what that is. Usually, what the city processes, if this street is designated to have sidewalks, when they do the repaving of the street, they usually, that's when they put the infrastructure in at that time, so they don't have to rip the pavement up twice. So if it's-
Oh, so we can look at the repaving schedule then?
Yeah.
The repaving schedule is the sidewalk schedule.
Yeah, and so, but within the, I don't think the sidewalks are funded to the level of like the street repair, so they may not, you know, even if that street is, you know, a street that they'd like to install a sidewalk on, doesn't mean that it'll fit into that cycle just for budgetary purposes. Might have to wait down the road.
And Samus Street was relatively recently repaved, so the likelihood of that happening anytime soon, I would say, is probably slim. It's not bumpy at all. It doesn't have any potholes, which is kind of nice. And, Mr. Graves, I understand, you know, sort of where you're coming from, and perhaps P and Z Commission should have thought of that for the application next door. But the property on the corner, people walk on that front yard all the time just to get off the street. So while, you know, I appreciate your point of view, I think any, any little refuge of safety for pedestrians is a good thing in the long run.
If I may go back to the original authority question issue, and maybe Steve can help me with this. When I looked at the new regs, which, by the way, weren't the regs under which our permit was pulled, but when I, when I look under the new regs, there's a definition of development parcel that addresses sidewalks, and part of that development was that it was seven and a half acres or greater. Is there a separate reference to individual lots relative to sidewalks in our zone that I didn't see?
Yeah, the section is section sixty-two under the absent. But again, like you said, that's what's within the new regulations, so the, you know, it's, it's referenced in there, so that's kind of what the commission was contemplating, but yours was approved under the prior.
Right, right. So, so there really was no reference at the time that we made our application to sidewalks in that zone?
And it was, I don't believe it was spelled out quite the way it's spelled out in this new regulation.
Okay, no, understood. So, you know, just thinking about this, you know, everybody kind of understands the idea of sidewalks and the safety issue. Is there, is there another alternative here in terms of a condition on this approval whereby we would contribute or bond the sidewalk until such time as the city can actually put in something that's useful? Rather than just having one piece of paving across the Graves property where people can jump out of the way if they don't feel comfortable walking down the street? Is that, is that an option that's viable or the commission would consider?
Steve, I'm going to, I'm looking to you for an answer on that.
I mean, that's really your, your decision at the end of the day, yours being the commission. I mean, we have bonded, you know, future improvements in the past for commercial projects, including sidewalks, so that's really your call. Only thing that we'd have to think about is just how that gets kind of cataloged and captured. So if it's twenty years from now, someone doesn't say, you know, and the city puts a sidewalk in, and we say, oh, yeah, we had funds from the Graves to install the sidewalk at this location. So that would be my only, only area that I'm not positive at this point. Maybe it would make sense if you want to carry it over a month, and we can iron that piece out and get back to you in a minute.
Okay.
So I just had a quick, just a factual question. Is the proposed sidewalk area in the city right of way or inside the Graves line title?
It's in the city right of way. It would be in the city right of way, and it was, it was specified in the condition of approval, called for a sidewalk meeting town specs, but it was also called a four-foot sidewalk, and if I'm not mistaken, the town specs is a five-foot sidewalk, so that was you know, honestly, they were kind of making it up as it went along in the hearing, and I honestly feel like this whole thing came up with our project because there was extensive discussion of sidewalks on a major multifamily project over at Merit Seven before us on the agenda. And that wasn't the case next door, so it didn't come up on that. So it, it feels, it feels like an uneven application of, of the discretion of the commission in our view.
What's, what's the pleasure of the commission?
I would just like to say, Mr. Cologne, that there are, there have been other applications that have been sort of islands like yours where we have put the sidewalk in. I don't think we're unfairly picking on you. It's relatively recent, but within the last year or so, but please don't feel you're being singled out. I would be willing to wait.
If we have the opportunity to wait to talk about this a little more, I would like to do it just more. Now, I'm not going to say that. I would like an opportunity to think about it.
Okay.
Yeah, can I share my screen for a second and just show you a visual?
Actually, I'd like to move this along.
If you submit it, we'll see it online, so.
Okay. Well, I think that worked. I'm sorry. It took a liberty there, but this is Samus Street. This is the space we're talking about right here. It's about all the sidewalk you're going to get for the length of Samus Street. Call it ten percent of it, tops, because remember, we've got Farm Creek here as well.
And I'd like to get feedback from Anna from Nick and from Galen. Push it back, push it back a month. Have the staff do a little more research.
I think it helps to have the staff do more research. I don't feel like I fully understand the requirement. Based on what I've heard, I would say it should stand. But I have no problem with getting more research on the issue.
I agree.
Oh.
I concur as well.
JJ?
I agree.
Okay, so we'll put this back on the agenda for our meeting next month, June fifth, is it? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our second item is twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two SPR Cali J Company Contractor Division LLC, two oh one Ponus Avenue Extension, District Five, Block Fifty-four, Lot Nine, detached accessory dwelling unit.
Yes, how you doing? Well, our architect is not connected. And we would like her to be on the meeting. So you might have some questions that we don't know how to, to answer, but basically, we're looking to-
Has she received the link?
Yes. She was, she was thinking that the meeting was at seven.
Is the reason that she can join us because she's unable to at this time or because of the link issue?
Well, she, she thought that it was at, that the meeting was at seven, not at six. She, she actually confused me. She, my wife, she was the one who told me that the meeting was at six, so I had to leave what I was doing to come to the meeting, but I've been trying to contact her, but I wasn't, I'm not able to get her to get connected.
Why don't we, why don't we put this on hold, go through the next item and see if we have time to come back to it at seven o'clock?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Third item, twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one CAM Hillside Plaza LLC, Joseph Chris Chiolo, fourteen sixteen North Main Street, District Two, Block Twenty-five, Lot Twelve. Change the use on the second floor of a mixed-use building from office to residential, eight dwelling units. Report and recommended action. Is there someone here to represent the owner?
I don't see anybody on the participant list.
I assume they were sent a link for the meeting?
Yeah, they should have gotten all the information.
We've never been in this position before.
Raising for-
Can you represent the owner, or should we?
I can give a very brief summary, and Brian, maybe if you could help by just bringing up the plan. It is a pretty simple application. The CAM statute does require that when there is a change of use within the CAM zone, that has to get approved by the commission. This was internal space that was downtown that was previously office space. I have heard from several folks, it is pretty, I should know, difficult to rent out office space, and folks are looking to convert from office in many instances to residential, especially for these, not as great office spaces or greatly conveniently located spaces. So this is a simple conversion of existing space from office to residential. Residential generally requires those parking in that office per the code, so that's really kind of what it was. Some of my zoning staff did jump the gun and actually started to issue the permit before realizing it did require commission approval, so we did have to unfortunately halt that process and let the applicant know that, you know, that was required. But that's really in a nutshell. There's no, they're not on the water. There's not any issues floodzone-wise. There's no impacts to any coastal resources, so it's, you know, I'd say more of a check-the-box formality than anything else.
And how many of these units will be affordable?
Brian, do you have that? Brian, chance?
Steve, well, Brian is looking for that. Is this, other than the CAM aspect, is this an over-the-counter permit?
Correct, yeah. If it wasn't a CAM, it wouldn't have been. Yeah, they do. I think the, there are existing units within the building, residential units, which I don't believe were under the workforce housing program, but the additional units that were brought in does bring them up to, I think it's two units, unless they were doing one plus a fractional payment in the second.
Not sure if they showed it on the plan, but I believe, yeah, it was two, two workforce units.
Now, that was my understanding as well, that there would be two workforce units. Do we know where they will be?
We do not at this point. I mean, we could always place a condition of approval that the units be representative of the entire development. Prior to that, which I think we handled that.
Okay.
Isn't that usually in the standard?
Resolution, yes.
And suspenders, but, right.
And do we have a resolution on this?
I'm eye-patting it, so Brian will have to.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question? I know you said that there's no parking requirements in this zone anymore. Is there already a parking lot sort of, that was sort of designated for the office space and the eight apartments on the third floor and the first, like, or is this an entirely street parking situation down there?
Uh, Brian, can you pull up, even there an aerial or site plan?
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm asking you to do it, I'm sorry.
I believe they did use the Webster Street Lot for their parking.
I assume, I assume they have the Webster Street Lot, yeah.
Most of those developments along the perimeter of the lot have some rights to parking.
Maybe the survey's not the best, so I can do an aerial. Yeah, let me switch to an aerial, be better.
Oh, I see the, the lot behind the cheese.
Yep, 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 yeah.
Do they have to pay for those spaces?
No, I don't.
Are they, they're not feeding a meter?
I don't believe so.
I think they may have like a long-term lease agreement, or they've purchased actual physical parking spaces.
Thank you.
Yes, it's like, it's pretty traditional with the older downtowns and the older buildings where a lot of them were built to, to all the lot lines without, without parking areas.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the resolution, so we can discuss it?
Motion.
Okay, Anna moves. Richard seconds. Let's go through the language.
I just want to add something about the workforce housing to this.
Yes, that staff will have to approve the location of the units for the workforce housing. All right, any questions about it? If not, let's call the question. I think we can do this with a show of hands. This is a, we're acting on a motion to approve the resolution. All those in favor? Okay, looks to me like it's unanimous. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six SUV Dennis Brown, seventy-two Soundview Avenue, District Five, Block eighty-one lots twenty and twenty-one A. This is a three-lot subdivision with a lot line revision to create a total of four building lots. Is someone here representing the property owner?
Yes, good evening.
Attorney Blank?
Thank you, Mr. Shulman. So, good evening, Adam Blank. I live here in Norwalk, attorney for Dennis Brown. I'm just gonna give you a brief overview of the subdivision proposed, and then we're sort of happy to answer questions you have. With us tonight is, I believe Dennis Brown is on the Zoom and Wayne Devenzo, who's the project engineer. He's, and Wayne will answer questions you have. He's not, he won't give a formal presentation unless somebody asks him to. The property, I can share my screen. So it's on the corner of Soundview and Edgewood is where we are. It's two contiguous lots. This is what's existing. It's about twenty-five thousand square feet. It's the fifth taxing district and it's Zone CD two, and this is essentially a single-family and two-family neighborhood. The existing, pre-existing non-conforming use at this site, this has been an industrial site for quite some time. So we're actually proposing to take it off of the industrial nature and turn it into residential. We've given notice to the neighbors of the hearing. We've given your staff the green cards. We received sign-offs and/or comments from DPW, WPCA and TMP, which your staff has also seen and been provided. And, and none, none of them indicated any impediment to an approval of the subdivision application. As, as was referenced, it's two lots now. We want to make it four lots. And that does require a lot line revision and, and a creation of two additional lots. The lots will all fully conform to Norwalk Building Zone Regulations for the CD two. The proposed subdivision again, one, well, I'm going backwards, I guess, one, two, three, four to four lots. With, with some street trees along the street. And, and the lots, the use of these lots will be a, a single or, or duplex homes, two-family homes. Which again, those are either uses permitted in this zone. Again, like I said, we've agreed to plant some trees all along the frontages. We've submitted a drainage report demonstrating the ability to meet or exceed the city's drainage standards, decreasing the runoff, increasing the water quality for the, for proposed lots. With that, I'll guess I'll open it up to if you have any questions or if you want to hear anything specific from the owner or from the project engineer.
Yeah, Attorney Blank, since this is a public hearing, I should have spoken before you, if, if I can take just a minute to explain how the public hearing is run. And typically, presentation is made by the owner or the owner's representative on the project. When that presentation has been completed, we will open it up to the public for comments. And at that point, either Mr. Baker Mr. Kleppen will explain how you can access the public hearing. We don't place limits on how long you can speak, but we ask that you limit your comments to what you think is necessary without unnecessary repetition. You have only one opportunity to speak, so you're encouraged to make sure that everything you wish to say, you say with that one opportunity. After every member of the public who wishes to speak has had a turn, we will turn it back to the owner or the owner's representative for response to any questions or issues that have been raised by members of the public. Throughout this process, with the exception of comments by the public, the commission members are encouraged to ask any questions they have about the project. When the response to the public comments have been completed, we will close the public hearing and move on to a discussion of action. Attorney Blank, I apologize for having to interrupt, for not having done that at the beginning. But I'll now turn it back to you.
Sure, and I think, I think sort of my part of the presentation was done. If you'd like to hear from the engineer, he can talk with you a little bit, or if you have questions for us, we're happy.
Do you have questions?
Sure.
Hey, Adam. Okay, so, um, may I see an, an artist rendering of the proposed buildings?
There is, we, we don't, there's no sort of proposed buildings yet. We actually have to apply, if we get the subdivision approved here this evening, when the, the builder is ready to move forward with construction, they have to apply, like as if you owned your, if you had a lot and you wanted to build a house, that application comes later. So we, we don't have those kinds of architecturals at this point.
Okay.
It's just to make sure that we can actually fit four lots, you know, legal lots on this, at this location, and that we can provide drainage for them. That's sort of the, the role at this point for, for you folks.
Thank you.
Other questions for Attorney Blank? Please, go ahead.
Hi, Attorney Blank. I believe that some of the structures on that property have already been torn down. And I also think that some of the large mature trees to the back edge of the property or side edge, depending on whether you're on Soundview or the side street. Are they still there and do you plan on leaving those trees if this application is approved?
So the, I think there's been a little bit of site work done. I was at the site today and the structures are still up. I don't know if, if there's been maybe a little portion demolished. Dennis, if you know, I'm sure you do know, but but they're, they're up. They are imminently gonna come down. The, the trees in the rear of the site poses a an issue for us. We, we would like to preserve those trees. The new, the new zoning regs, so under the old regs, they would have been preserved for sure. Under the old regs, you could have your garage face the street. Under the new regs, you, you effectively cannot have a garage face the street. That's not exactly what the reg says, but it, but in a lot of this width, it will effectively force the garage to face the rear, which means your driveway's got to come around into the backyard. And, and that may cause us to lose the trees we've talked about. If they can be saved, we want to save them, and if we can get a variance, we've talked about that possibility, but but we're, but in all likelihood, they probably have to go to comply with the regs.
Okay, thank you for that answer. That's, I know, having the entrance to the garage in the back could be challenging. And I just would bring to your attention that there was a, a set of multifamily buildings built on Bauton Street not too long ago, and they looked nice on paper, but when they got into the street, they were somewhat oversized for the neighborhood. And so I hope if this does get approved, that you all will take that into consideration when you are making your building designs. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there other questions for Attorney Blank?
Has the soil been tested?
Dennis or Wayne?
Yes, Wayne Devenzo, Fairfield County Engineering. Yes, we did soil testing there for, for the drainage. We did several, seven or eight or nine, I think, deep test holes and perk tests there, so yes, it has been tested.
Care to expound on the results of the tests?
Also, well, they were, they varied somewhat, but there were, by soil testing, I'm talking about soil testing for the purposes of drainage, so we were looking for restrictive layers in the soil, the groundwater ledge mottling. You know, there was a restrictive layer at a moderate depth at all of them. I, I don't have the exact numbers, but it's thirty inches, thirty-six inches, something like that.
Wayne, if I could chime in. Hi, I'm Dennis, the, the property owner. Before we purchased this from the owners of the Wachesky Brothers Commercial Property, we started testing. So we did a number of test holes and we hired Big East Environmental to do testing. So we went through a phase one and we're halfway through a phase two. And once the buildings are demolished, we're gonna test under them to finish it off completely and have a, a finished phase two. So yes, it has been tested and we got a, you know, good results on it. Surprising. I mean, it is surprising that, that company was there for a long time. But, but it was good.
All righty, thank you.
Okay.
Other questions? Nothing else from the commission members? Attorney Blank, is there anything further?
No, it's subject to opportunity to rebuttal in the event that there's public comment.
Okay. Steve, can you explain how people who wish to comment can?
Sure, if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to speak, you obviously just come up to the podium, give your name and address. Anybody that is attending virtually who would like to speak, just use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen, or if you are dialed in by phone, you would dial star line and that would also raise your hand.
It doesn't appear to be anyone in the audience. Is there anyone online who wishes to speak?
I don't see anybody.
All right, let's, let's wait just one minute. Okay. Then we will turn it back to you, Attorney Blank.
The, the only thing, I mean, obviously there's nothing to, but the only thing I, I will just take this opportunity to put a plug in. I know you're gonna look at tweaking the regs in some fashion in the fall. And I, I would just say that if you're able to consider the, I mean, I, I get that in the ordinary course, you may not want garages to face the street. But if there was a, a process to give you, I'll say discretion, and that's probably not the right word, but a little bit of wiggle room on that, that would not require someone to go and get a variance, which is expensive and time-consuming and in all honesty, likely to be denied. It, it would be great to be able to, on a case-by-case basis, sometimes allow garages to face the street. Because we really would like to save the trees, but it's, it, it's hard to do that with the regs.
Thank you for that. Steve? We have a resolution on this?
Yeah, Brian will.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to approve? All right, Mr. Rowena has moved. Is there a second? And Amy has seconded. Let's do a roll call on this.
Certainly, Mr. Williams? Ms. DeBachnick?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lingalis?
Yes.
And Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I believe that somebody else for Ponus that did pop in, so we can.
Okay, good. All right, then let's go back to twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two SPR Cali J Company Contractor Division LLC. Two oh one Ponus Avenue Extension, District Five, Block Fifty-four. Lot Nine Detached Accessory Dwelling Unit.
Yes, our architect Beatrice is here, right?
It's here. Beatrice, are you there?
Yes, yes, I'm here. I'm sorry, just having some technical issues.
You sound, you sound a little muffled. Is there anything you can do to improve the quality?
Yes, hold on one second. Let me just change computers. I don't know why. Hold on one second. I'm going to leave the, the meeting and then rejoin. I'm sorry.
That's all right. No, we haven't lost Ralt again. She was switching computers to see if she could improve the sound quality.
Just need to unmute Beatrice.
It's better now?
That is better.
Oh, okay. Oh, oh, thank God, thank God. Yeah.
And I see you've moved to Milan.
I'm sorry?
It looks as if you've, you've moved to Italy.
Oh, yeah, I'm talking, I'm.
Florence, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to present this application. It's an ADU on top of a playhouse. It's an accessory building and it's going to serve as an entertainment park in the first floor, and the second floor is going to be an accessory detached unit. So let me pull up the file and I'm going to start. So let me pull up the file and I'm going to start sharing the the screen with you. Okay, yeah, here we go.
And what is the, uh, address, uh, of this?
Uh, it's two oh one Ponus Avenue, and I believe that it's, uh, it's also called Extension because it's a dead end. It's just the very end of Ponus Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay, so can you, uh, can you see this, uh, okay, the site plan?
Yeah, uh, can you enlarge that just a little bit? If that's, that's, that's better.
Is it, is that better?
Yes, it is.
Okay, uh, so my name is Beatrice DeSantis. I'm, uh, uh, here, uh, talking on behalf of my client, uh, Cesar Diaz and Kimberly Mora. Uh, they are the owners of Cali J Company and they see their proposed, uh, uh, family, uh, residence. They own, uh, another residence here in Ponus Avenue, which is going to be rented. Or sell in the, uh, in the future, but this is going to be their main residence. So they are adjusting it and renovating it, the main building. At the moment, we have a permit. Uh, uh, open for that. And, uh, they wish to add another, uh, a couple of other, uh, structures just to accommodate their family. And also, uh, to accommodate their number of cars. Um, one of the issues, uh, that was brought late, uh, lately was, uh, another parking space. There, uh, is some misunderstanding. This is a two-car garage. It's not a, a, a one-car garage. So, um, uh, there's two cars parking space here. And there's also other two cars, uh, here closer to the, uh, ADU. Um, this is going to be an ADU on top on the second floor. As is privately here. And on the bottom is going to serve as a play area and, uh, game area. Uh, for, uh, the pool and also, uh, it's going to act as a four season. It's enclosed in order for them to enjoy it, uh, enjoy it throughout the year. This is an existing barn. Uh, it's go- we're going to keep this. And, uh, this is the, this is an existing garage. In this area, it's going to be moved a little bit over here and it's going to be rebuilt with more appropriate size for, to fit two more cars. So that's our presentation for for today. It's just, uh, uh, those two accessory buildings. We are well within the twenty-five percent allowed within the new, um, zoning regulations. We're less than twenty-five percent including all the imperious areas. Including, uh, buildings, including walkways and including the pool and and the paddles. The, uh, the existing, um, uh, driveway that we have here, it was removed and it's going to be. All gravel gra- uh, driveway. So we are actually making the imperious area a lot better. Uh, prior to that, we had this long driveway towards this area and this all was, you know, like, uh, paved. So this is going to be green now. Uh, we're going to re- this green area is going to remain and we are going to, uh, do some planting here. To put some buffering area between. The neighbors and to provide a little bit more privacy to the neighbors and to the, uh, and to the family. I don't know if you have any, any question?
Questions from, uh, members of the commission?
Uh, yes, I have a question.
Please, go ahead, JJ.
Yes, good evening. Um, um, your ADU will be over the family. Pool house or room?
Yeah, it's going to be on the second floor. The first floor is going to be just a play, uh, family area.
So will there be a separate entrance for them?
Yes, it's going to be a separate entrance for them. Yeah.
A different stairwell?
There's just one stairwell for, for, uh, going to the second floor.
It's. Will they have a, okay, so they will share the same doorway? I mean, the same?
No, no, there's going to be a doorway here, separate for the AD unit.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, we said, yeah, um, uh, uh, an older son. And, uh, he is expected to be using these for, you know, like, a more private, uh.
Okay, so you're not actually renting to the public. You're creating space for family?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and now this is going to be a nice play area. And TV area for them to enjoy throughout the year and also open to, uh, you know, when they they are in the pool.
And there's no access to the. First floor from that stairwell entrance. If the upstairs person wants to go, he goes sort of around the corner.
Yeah, yeah. But it's, uh, it's close by. We have the parking area here and then there's a gravel walkway all the way to the, to the pool. To the pool house and for for the.
Is is there a designated parking space exclusively for the ADU?
Um, uh, not, 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 not exclusively. But, you know, uh, but we can provide it. We have plenty of space to 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 provide it, yes.
Thank you.
Questions from anyone else?
So altogether, there are four parking spaces?
Yes, there are already four parking spaces and, uh, there's also parking spaces here in this, um, uh, courtyard that is, uh, in front of the main residence.
I see. Thank you. What is the square footage of the ADU?
Um. Hold on one second. It's, uh, five hundred and one square feet. So we are within, uh, within the the allowed square footage.
Yes, thank you.
What's the square footage of the play area?
Uh, it's going to be probably around the same, given take, you know, maybe six hundred square feet?
I didn't, I didn't hear you.
It's, uh, about six hundred square feet.
Six hundred.
Six hundred.
Yeah.
Uh, just to confirm again, um. The, um. Owner of, uh, this property is, uh, going to be the, uh, primary, uh, residence?
Yes, yes, they are going to be living there.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? All right, uh, can I have a, uh, motion, uh, to, uh, approve the resolution? So that we can put it out?
Second.
Thank you, Darius. Uh, I'm sorry, who would second come from?
I second JJ.
Thank you, JJ. Ryan, you want to put that up for us?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any, uh, questions about the resolution? Uh, if not, uh, let's do a roll call. This is a, um, vote to approve, uh, the, uh, ADU.
Uh, Ms. DeBachnick?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
No.
Ms. Lingalas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shon.
Yes. Okay, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for, uh, hearing us. I really appreciate it.
Thank you to everyone. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you. Best of luck.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, okay, uh, seven oh six, a little early for us to take a break. Um. Why don't we make make a little more progress on. On Norwalk Center LLC. Um. We are, uh, still in, uh, the process of hearing public comment. Um, let's, uh, see if we can, uh, do this in the same way we, um. Have before. Uh, we'll go first, uh, see if there's anyone online, uh, who wishes to, uh, comment. We'll go back and forth between online and people in the audience.
Lynell Jones?
Thank you. My name is Lynell Jones and my address is Ten Point Road, South Norwalk. Compassion is when you relate to someone's situation, want to help and take action to do so. East Norwalk is again being treated politically unfairly. And you, the volunteers on this commission, with compassion, can recognize that problems as well as conflicts exist. And deny this application. This is a site plan review. Site plan reviews by definition are exactly about the neighbors' concerns, public health and safety. You cannot forget this site abuts the homes to all the neighbors who have expressed concerns over the past three evenings. If you believe in fairness, then put yourself in the shoes of a resident living near Ten Norton. Have a little compassion and take a close look at the expert reports. Of course, the handsomely paid attorney will say all the conditions have been met. However, does she live there? The thirteen-page air quality review and nine-page traffic review. Submitted and paid for by the hard-working East Norwalk residents, forced to pay with their personal time and money. To defend their health and safety. Went into detail about environmental health and safety, public, uh, related issues. In contrast, what a surprise, the three-page environmental analysis submitted by the MTA. Accepted by P and Z concluded the opposite. Who wrote the three-page environmental analysis? None other, none other than SLR Consulting. A firm you should know well, given all the work they've done and are doing for the city of Norwalk. At a minimum, an apparent, apparent conflict of interest between Norwalk and SLR. A current SLR Norwalk contract is to increase Norwalk staff municipal capacity. Identify gaps across city government and train departments to communicate, work together. This SLR contract was extended to write the state-required resilience and sustainability plan promised last fall. A draft was introduced this March. Norwalk's resilience and sustainability. Plan, draft plan, available on the redevelopment website, despite being a citywide plan. Does not support this Ten Norton application. A reasonable person only needs to take a look at the dates on these two SLR documents. And compare the contents of the two SLR documents to see the clear SLR conflict of interest. Sort of like one attorney firm representing both sides of a dispute. SLR is shilling for the MTA and Norwalk resilience and sustainability at the same time saying different things. It is allowed, legal, even common, however unprincipled, deceitful and self-serving. For consultants and attorneys to be paid twice for conflicting advice. Yet it is wrong, very wrong legally and morally, when someone acting as an agent. Respecting others with their, representing others with their trust. In this case, the public trust accepts conflicting advice and does not act in the interest of the principles being represented. In this case, you, the appointed P and Z commissions, commission, are tasked with approving or denying this application for Ten Norton Place. You are the agents and the principals are Norwalk citizens who you are making decisions on behalf of. The agent principal problem results from conflicts in priorities. Examples range from agents forgetting, ignoring. Public health and safety and the safety of principals. To agents using their political power to create a window for a short term loosely, if at all defined, approved use. To please a powerful entity, the MTA, an entity with lots of politically powerful friends. As agents, you can either show human compassion to the East Norwalk neighbors. Who have had to hire their own experts to prove public health and safety concerns or not. A site plan review must take public health and safety into account. And this suddenly allowed, never clearly defined use is not what the public believes is in their health and safety for the many reasons shared. Again, as agents, the ones with the vote, you have a legal and moral responsibility to the principles you represent. Not an obligation to believe alleged and potentially conflicted, highly-paid experts or attorneys who live nowhere near the site. Bad blood exists when decisions are politically motivated and conflicts are hidden. Big boys with political clout like the MTA and all sorts of back-channel connections are used to getting what they want. They know how to use political pressure, trade political favors, get their friends promoted to powerful positions. And they don't care about bad blood with East Norwalk residents. Site plan reviews are required for a reason. Reasonable people understand public health and safety. Compassionate people can see through schemes where hired experts, including attorneys, twist logic. With the tone of authority to benefit themselves and their clients. Consider compassion, expert testimony, conflicts of interest, and what is in the public interest. And vote to deny this application. The public trust depends on you. Agents for the public to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Would, uh, someone from the audience like to speak?
If somebody else online to join.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Rita Pascalides. I live on Ten Acacia Street. In East Norwalk, right down the street, walking distance to Nordans. Um, I really, really feel with, uh, to the bottom of my heart that I don't think this is a good idea. With this, with these big tractor trailers. This week I had a little incident and I'm still shaking up about it. Um, I was at the stoplight, I stopped, I was at the the light. Towards Strawberry Hill. To go over that little bridge, you know, to go to CBS, my favorite place in the world and, um. This big white tractor trailer was trying to go into like the Norton, is that the street called Norton Street, Norton Bay Street? I don't. I think, you know, I don't know exactly because I was at the light going to Strawberry Hill. I don't know where, but I swear to you, I thought I was going to get crushed. I I really did. And the only thing I kept thinking of is, oh, my God, I hope the light, you know, above the red light. Is going to get this. So if I'm going to die, at least there's going to be proof that the truck crushed me. Um, anyway, I had a friend today coming from Strawberry Hill, coming to my house. And she said that there was this big truck in front of her, behind her. She was coming to pick some stuff up. For me, um, for her, and she said, I can't believe what's going on over there. It's all these trucks. And I said, I know, I'm not going to be in. I go down Strawberry Hill like five to ten times. A day because I'm, you know, going to St. Renner's, I'm going to, you know, my little thing, my mom lives, you know, on, uh, George Ave, so. She's nearby, so. I'm scared. I'm really, really scared of these trucks. And I just think it's a bad idea. I mean, I I don't understand. I really don't. I mean, I, I don't understand, I really don't. Why we can't do anything better? Like, why can't we do something? I don't know, something that Norwalk, you know, deserves, I don't know. Because I grew up in East Norwalk, this is my third house in East Norwalk. I went to school, I walked down this Norden from Nathan Hale, from Norwalk High. I just can't understand why it has to be these trucks. And I could, I hear them, I mean, I don't know how many has, has, are they there? Like, I don't know what's going on over there. But there's, it seems like there's a lot of trucks there already, I don't know. But I could hear them at night. I don't know, I just like, I'm paying so much money in taxes and my new tax bill hasn't even come yet. And I'm, I'm like, I don't know what to say, I'm like, all this money and then all this noise and all these trucks and then I'm gonna get like, like, I don't want to die, I don't want to get crushed of all things. But I'm like a nervous drunk. And this happened this week and my friend, the situation with my friend coming over, this happened today, right before the meeting. Like around, I'll even tell you what time, she came exactly at my house at 3:30. She's like, oh my God, this big truck, and she was telling me this story, I said, oh, you don't want to know. I thought I was gonna die, this week too, you know? Anyway, it happened, it was a white, big tractor-trailer, I don't know. It just happened, it was turning, you know, and I was trying to go left, it was trying to go, you know, in and I was trying to go right. And I'm, I'm like, is this what, you know, I'm gonna have every single day? That's all I'm saying, you know, it's like, I want a better solution to this property. I grew up with this, this, you know, I, I'd been around this since I was a little girl from Nathan Hale. And it was pretty then and it was nice, it was, it was a nice area. It still is nice, but I really truly think that we could do better. And I don't, I don't want this to happen in my, you know, basically like down the street for me. That's all. This is the first time I've ever, ever said anything about anything. And I love Norwalk and I love East Norwalk the most, so I really want better. And I'm scared, and I shouldn't be scared. Thank you, thank you very much.
We have someone else online?
Carol Solheim?
Rhonda, Rhonda, take the doc, please. My name is Carol Solheim, I live on Seventeen Overbrook Road, I own property in East Norwalk, so everything that's been going on is a great concern to me. But, excuse me. But as I was listening to the traffic report, I was really looking at this from the point of view of an educator with 38 years' experience and who's lived through, lived through three major renovations of the high school where I taught in Monroe. And there were a bunch of questions that came to my mind and I've sent this in an email, I just want to kind of briefly go over them. You're going to be having a lot of traffic in this area anyway because you're going to be building a new high school, which is going to mean a lot of construction trucks. And I don't know if any allowance was made in consideration when they did the traffic report to that this process is going to be on probably for several years, it doesn't, it takes a while to build a high school. And I was wondering if any consideration had been about the parents perceiving that all this extra traffic is going to be on Strawberry Hill and they're gonna start driving their kids to school. And I don't know if you've had an opportunity to be on Strawberry Hill when people are either, either dropping kids off or picking them up, but there are lines of cars to get into. I've especially noticed this at Nathan Hale. And I would, I would imagine that people who had, who have children who normally walk in the area would be considering that it was, the road was becoming too dangerous to have them walk and would also be driving. School hours are not limited to merely opening and closings. Schools are often in use after school at night. There's always going to be some traffic going to schools. And I don't know if this was taken into consideration. Staff arrival, I know as a teacher, in order to avoid traffic, I would arrive because we would arrive at quarter after six in the morning, school started at 7:10 and I, I left early from Norwalk to get to Monroe in order to avoid the bus traffic and in order to be ready to teach at 7:10. So that, so we're gonna have additional traffic maybe earlier than, than we, than we realize because teachers will be coming in early to, to be in, be in time for school. And I don't know if any of you have been on the Merrick Parkway recently and I do have my son-in-law and my daughter both live in Trumbull and work down this way and the commute down county is horrific. So that's gonna be even more so if you consider the people who are going to be working here are probably in order to work at this facility are going to probably have to live further away and, and just add to traffic that we're not even, we're not even considering here. High school students drive to school, increased traffic, increased chance of accidents with inexperienced drivers. We have talked about repeatedly in education that, that the high schoolers should be going to school later because their internal clocks are different. They're not ready to learn at 7:10 in the morning, and I speak from experience when I, when I talk about that. And what happens if that becomes more of a, a problem? And we, we definitely decide in Norwalk, yeah, maybe the high school should start at nine o'clock, this would work better for our, our students. Traffic in Norwalk is already a problem. I'm retired, I can plan my trips when I have to do errands. But that doesn't mean that it isn't still a problem. This morning I was taking, had to drop my dog off for doggy daycare and I had to make several different paths because I kept running into construction, Dry Hill is, is cut off right now. So I went up going on Friendly and Saddle and then of course, one of the streets over there is all dug up. This is kind of additional agita that we have trying to get around Norwalk. Excuse me if I'm a little skeptical about traffic reports. When I lived on Gregory Boulevard, we asked for a traffic study to be done, this is going back many, many years. And the traffic study was done in December. The traffic study for Cemetery Street was done in March. Anybody who lives in East Norwalk knows that the heaviest time of the year is between Memorial and Labor Day where traffic becomes brutal, especially for people accessing the beach. And the beach is open to every resident of Norwalk. That traffic is also going to be there and that was not taken into consideration. I don't know if anybody mentioned that on East Avenue, we have a daycare room to grow? That is not, I don't know if that was taken into consideration. I just think that there are many, many other uses of this site and I'd be happy sometime to sit down with people and explain some of my ideas that we could do with a site that would be far less impactful than this particular use of the site. And I, I would ask you to please consider the impact on our three schools on Strawberry Hill if this goes through. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Hello, everybody. My name is Joe Balustreri. I live at 130 Phillows Street. I own a property also at 87 Gregory Boulevard. I'm here as a real estate professional concerned for the city. I lived in Norwalk my entire life. I've practiced real estate for 14 years in the city. I sell a lot of homes in Norwalk. And I don't say this as a shameless plug, I say this to convey, convey to you why my experience matters as it relates to this matter. While I'm not a traffic or environmental expert, I'm a real estate expert. And I have a deep sense of the frustrations that Norwalk homeowners are facing as we expand our city. I have a large sample size of homeowners that I've spoken to around the city with complaints about our growth and specifically the traffic. I even have clients that are leaving East Norwalk right now because of that growth, the expansion and the traffic that have become too much. Now they're faced with another project to bring additional traffic to the most congested part of our city, East Avenue. As another commenter brilliantly stated, East Ave is a war zone. I was there today, took me, it took me like five minutes just to get from exit 16 to underneath the hot, underneath the railroad. And then on my way here, it took me eight minutes to get here from 102 Gregory Boulevard, which should be a three-minute drive because it's a straight shot, two miles. Obviously, if you're driving very fast. But I'm shocked and appalled that the traffic study for this project wasn't required to consider East Ave in their study. And whether it's with nefarious purposes, purposes or poor judgment that they failed to do so. I wonder if that traffic study included East Ave, would it have made the case that this type of use for Norden would have seen those Ds and Fs that the traffic experts discussed for their level of service? And as such, they chose to ignore it intentionally to make their case seem stronger. And the last speaker actually brought up another good point about when that traffic, traffic study was done. On my way here, there were traffic all the way from the, the street at First Street all the way down to Cemetery. There was traffic all the way down. So people were going to the beach because it's one of the nicer days that have come in a while. So they acknowledged that they're bringing more trucks and traffic onto the road would be a challenge up until the proposed 2006, 2007 changes to East Ave that would remedy the issue, which we know wouldn't now that they're adding more apartments on East Ave. That means that for at least one to two years after this MTA moves in, there are the already awful stretch of roadway or this other thoroughfares all around Strawberry Hill, including the very street that the city hall is on, would likely continue to see chaos. None of this seems to include what were, in my opinion, crazy decisions to continue adding more residential rentals to the East Ave area. It makes me question how we could possibly have let all this new construction happen in our city. Why are we allowing these things to go through? I want to be clear, I'm not anti-growth. I am for the growth of Norwalk in a sustainable way that makes sense. We've had thousands of new rental apartments built in the last few years and those vested in those projects have indicated that they aren't worried about the infrastructure, the schools, et cetera, because they have ample capacity. While that may be true, our roads do not and cannot accommodate more cars than we have today. At what points does the cumulative development become a point in our traffic studies? Instead of seemingly ignoring alternate growth from other places around the city? In other words, if we're building South Norwalk, the traffic in South Norwalk is gonna affect East Norwalk as well and vice versa, despite being miles apart. For Norden Place, why are we even considering this? There's no net benefit to Norwalk. The only semblance of positive benefit to Norwalk is 100 jobs, which aren't even guaranteed to us. Is 100 jobs enough to satisfy our city's vision of a more green Norwalk? If you ask me, putting this facility in, our city would be a net negative and would make Norwalk even less livable, especially for anyone using exit 16. I have a great idea. Instead of allowing the MTA to come in and pollute our city even further, congest our roads, which are at the breaking point, and hurt our home values, why don't we follow the mayor's wishes to create the greenest city in Connecticut? And turn Norden into a beautiful park? Knock down this out-of-date industrial facility and create a place where we can further help our local environment, air quality, wildlife, and traffic issues by giving our neighbors a place to walk around when the weather is beautiful. I urge this commission to rethink this effort and do what's right for the city of Norwalk. Stop the MTA from coming here and find a use for Norden that doesn't destroy our city further. Thank you.
Thank you.
JF?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay. Thank you for hearing me. To those who have spoken before me for voicing that.
I, I'm sorry, firstly, you're, you're cutting in and out. And we need your name and your address, please. Again, we
Traffic?
You're, you're You're breaking up. We can't hear what you're saying.
Maybe mute her for now and then we'll go to the next caller and we can come back.
And we'll come back, okay, that's fine. Let's do that.
Yvonne M?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Terrific. My name is Yvonne Marchesi. I live at 28 Myrtle Street. And I am very concerned about the approval of this process. Myrtle Street is a cut-through from Strawberry Hill to East Avenue. As it stands, we are seeing increased tractor-trailer traffic come down our street. In addition to that, one of the previous callers, the former educator, was talking about the concern for students that are trying to walk to three schools on Strawberry Hill. I also have a student still in school for at least one more year who is of driving age and I am very concerned about him as a, as an inexperienced driver trying to navigate additional truck traffic. Especially in the mornings. When you, when we try, when I drive him to school in the mornings and we pull up to the intersection at Strawberry Hill and Myrtle Street, an attempt to make a left, the traffic is incredibly robust, I'll say. And in addition to that, there are a number of cars that park legally, which I think needs to be looked at, on Strawberry Hill on the side closest to East Avenue, on the south side. Or the west side, excuse me. That creates a sightline problem that is incredibly hard to navigate for me as an experienced driver. And requires often that I have to pull up and into the bike lane in order to see if I can make that left turn onto Strawberry Hill. The idea of increasing truck traffic on Strawberry Hill is just insane. And knowing that this traffic study was done in March is, it really puts it to question the validity of any findings that they came to with that traffic study. I don't know why we are looking for East Norwalk to grow and grow and grow. And I have questioned from the beginning with all the additional apartments that are going in, the capacity of our schools to keep up with new students with oversized classrooms. But in the end, it's the air quality and the traffic with this particular project that has me highly concerned. Not to mention trying to get onto East Avenue to get out of East Avenue at any time when traffic, which is pretty much all day. It is constant, constant holdups to try to get out of Myrtle Street and into any other part of Norwalk. And I hope you will vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. If there are additional people online that are waiting, because I'm representing ENNA, I have a rather lengthier statement than normal. Um, because I'm representing ENNA, I have a rather lengthier statement than, uh, normal. Um, would you, um, want to go ahead and defer to someone online who's waiting and I'll go ahead and. I don't know if you want to say clean bad up or we're just.
Sure, if you want to sit down, we have, we have two more people.
All right, again, J F.
Hi, I, I think I'm having a technical problem. Can you hear me?
Yes, this is much better.
Okay, thank you. Um, Jamie Fredus, three Sasquapon Road, and thank you for hearing me. And thank you to those who have spoken before me for voicing valid concerns. That I too have regarding safety, traffic, air, noise and environmental pollution. One thing that has not been touched on is the overall development vision for this neighborhood and for Norwalk as a whole. The recent proposed and approved mixed retail residential developments. That have been built and soon to be built. Has brought and will continue to bring more residents and families into the DOT area. This development is encouraged by the city and state. Due to close proximity to the East Norwalk Railroad Train Station. Its goal is to encourage small business and residents to move into the neighborhood. And be able to walk and bike to restaurants and shops and use the railroad. On the surface, this seems like a good idea, even though it surely will bring more traffic congestion, parking challenges. Increase noise and train, uh, and strain on infrastructure and schools. In some cases, this arguably may be worth the challenges. But this proposed MTA industrial use at Norton Place. Is completely antithetical to those intended goals. Allowing even more massive trucks on all hours. While even more people are walking and biking makes no visionary sense. The additional oversized trucks will need to traverse small quaint residential streets. Enlarging intersections may help address the needs of the trucks. But absolutely does not address the concerns and priorities of a residential family centered pedestrian oriented neighborhood. And would even diminish property values. It is by no means a solution. Norwalk is a large city with many different areas. But none is an island. What happens in one area affects the others. And what happens on one block affects another. With the construction of the high school, the relocation of the nursery, the Walk Bridge Project. And more and more new mixed use large complex construction. There already exists a tremendous growing issue with huge trucks. Having extreme difficulty traversing our small local residential roads. Someone in the previous meeting. Mentioned Route one thirty six and how maybe some of the homes along that road would not be affected. However. Route one thirty six runs to and through East Norwalk. The traffic and safety and noise and air pollution issues will affect multiple dozens of residents beyond the most immediate Norton neighbors. As the air quality control expert testified to in the previous hearing. This MTA maintenance terminal benefits no one in Norwalk. As a previous speaker mentioned, this Nor, Norton area should have been rezoned a long time ago. The residents in this neighborhood would benefit tremendously by more neighborhood friendly appropriate uses. And permitting this maintenance terminal would be doing an outright disservice to the residents of East Norwalk. Thank you.
Thank you.
S Hunter?
Yeah, we, we cannot hear anything you're saying. Is there anybody else online that would like to speak?
Dove Beckin, any chance?
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, you can hear me. Oh, thank goodness. Sorry about that. Um. This is Sarah Hunter and I'm at, uh, seventeen Schofield Place in East Norwalk. Um, I'm speaking as a resident and even though I'm on the ENNA board. Um, have two points of comment. A lot of people have spoken to things already that, uh, I would mention, but I won't because you've already heard them. So the two points that I want to mention are air quality and, uh, enforceability on air quality. What I found was that it's, um, it was honestly dismissive, the attitude from the applicant, the way that they handle their quality altogether. And I would have hoped that the city would have required more stringent air quality. Information, studies, everything else in order to move ahead with something like this. Thankfully, the East Norwalk, um, residents put together, uh, their pennies and came up with a really high quality, air quality. Um, expert who spoke on our behalf. And I also noticed that she did an excellent job refuting, um, more of the rebuttals by the applicant, which were again dismissive of air quality. To, to be clear, it's not air quality, it's our health. That's what air quality means. So air quality and pollution are related to not just asthma, but cancer. It's not just a light correlation is absolutely proven. That you are risking people's health with high concentrations of particulate matter two point five especially. So I want to focus your attention on the one thing that, um, I think she didn't have time to, to cover, which is re-suspended roadway particulate dust. That's a lot. I'm going to go back at it real quick. Re-suspended roadway particulate dust. So when traffic like trucks are driving along and, um, laying down the pollutants. They're getting onto the roadway and they're the equivalent of having dust lay down on the roadway. It's not just dispersed out into the air for the people who are walking by. And then when you have traffic run back over it again, that resuspends it. What that does is it creates a concentration of the pollution. And I'm going to read you three sentences from a government medicine twenty twenty study. On near road traffic related air pollution, re-suspended, uh, PM two point five from highways and arterials. Okay. So, I'm going to find the right place on this thing. Um. Two point five, uh, PM particulate matter, two point five, the, the dangerous stuff. Concentrations are often elevated close to roadways. The transportation sector produces PM two point five emissions from combustion, brake wear, tire wear and re-suspended dust. Pause for a second on brake wear. This is a heavily. Neighborhood traveled area. You heard about school buses. You heard about people who are going to bring their kids on, um, you know, cars. There's just a lot of stop and go. That much more stop and go is that much more. Air pollution being laid down in one place, whether it's brake dust or just the pollution of idling at stoplights. Though it's significant, going back to the study, um, what it says is that, um. The results of the study that they did, um, when you include the, when showed that the inclusion of re-suspended dust in the emission and dispersant model chain. Increased predictions of near roadway PM concentrations. Way up to, and this is shocking, seventy four percent. So we're already talking about existing pollutants that seem to be discounted and that you've heard about it, the truck traffic we have right now on Strawberry Hill. That's already bad. There's already a lot of that. And now you're going to add that much more and then you're going to actually have to factor in. Even higher levels than what you've heard because of the re-suspended roadway dust factor. So it's really significant and it's not just pollution. It's not just unpleasant to walk near it or bike near it. It's about people's health. You have, I see people out my window all the time who are walking with strollers and baby carriages and dogs and. People who are walking with their little kids and toddlers and, you know, that's the lovely thing about this East Norwalk neighborhood. It's very walkable. It's very nice. Um, when you get into the side streets, this will absolutely ruin it and it will make it dangerous, just literally dangerous. The applicant's dismissive of our help, health and, and concerns about our health. I hope that the city is not dismissive of our health. This is a very serious concern. The other piece I want to speak to is enforceability. The applicant can tell you anything they want, quite honestly, and I've been to enough of these. Um, things where we see that they say, oh, we'll have, you know, twenty trucks a day, two thousand trucks a day. It doesn't matter what they tell you. They can tell you, we'll have it at five AM, we'll have it at two PM. There's no enforceability. There's no enforceability to how many trucks, how big the trucks are, what time of hours that they come. If the enforceability is somebody complained and we're going to go levy a ticket for them for two hundred dollars, that doesn't mean a thing. You can't stop them from idling. You can't stop the size of the trucks, nothing. So I'm begging the city to please consider our health first. Consider that they're being dismissive about the air quality is because they don't want you to know how truly bad it is. We went to the trouble to get an air quality expert. I hope you will listen to that expert. I hope you will take into account that it is far worse than, than you could imagine. Um, please, please deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is that it for people waiting online?
Uh, no hands raised.
Okay, Ms. Cece?
Uh, good evening again, Diane Cece Olmstead Place. And, uh, representing, um, tonight, um, East Norwalk Neighborhood Association. Um, I'll refer to it as ENNA, um, in portions here. Um, first of all, I want to, um, let me apologize to the audience, or maybe you already know this from before, but sometimes. Um, because, uh, we don't have a chance to rebut the applicant's rebuttal. Um, organizations like ours and also just private residents. Have to spend some time upfront trying to figure out. Uh, what the rebuttal will be and then try to rebut the rebuttal. Because we know that we don't get the final word. Um, I also want to say that, um, because we've had, um, this has been a continuation. And we've had multiple documents that, um, that were provided to us at different intervals. Uh, that I may be hopping around here a bit and I apologize for that. I normally try to be a little bit more cohesive. Um, first, let me say, I, I want to clear something up, um. That the public refers to, and I just want to make sure for their benefit, but mostly for your benefit, that there's a good understanding of this. When people talk about the situation on East Avenue now, uh, the war zone, the congestion, uh, the gridlock, uh, the road rage, et cetera. Um, we know that, um. From our experience with prior applications and through the study of the TOD zone. Um, and the E V T Z corridor on East Avenue. That staff and the commission and others will often refer to the East Avenue Improvement Project. And so that is going to ultimately be the widening and straightening and, um, also the lowering of East Avenue. Um, indeed tractor trailers will be able to fit under the bridge. But I want to assure you and let the public know that that project. Um, was not approved and it's not intended to make East Norwalk the path of least resistance for truck traffic. That's going to support industry, um, that, that's going to be situated in East Norwalk, but primarily serve the region. We do not want to be the path of least resistance to put things here. That serve Fairfield County, but that you know and we know, um, our neighboring communities, their zone, their, their zoning code doesn't even allow it. And, and if it did, um, they've managed to find ways to, um, exclude it. The purpose of the East Avenue improvement is to, is to improve the, the traffic flow, um, to change the lanes so that we have some traffic calming. Um, and so that, that road becomes, um, better equipped for. What ultimately is the transit oriented development zone and E V T Z. And Mr. Kleppen himself can tell you that one of the fundamental tenants of that is not just its proximity to, uh, mass transit into the railroad station. It's because we're, the, um, opportunity exists for mixed use where you have a walkable, safe neighborhood. And so what we're suggesting here is counter to that. So I just want to make that clear when people talk about that, um, that, that those improvements are, are, um, are actually coming. Um, and, um, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll have some updates on it. But none of what they're doing with what we call the slalom or the lane widths or the lowering or anything. Um, should be viewed or intended for more truck traffic. Um, it's also important because in a minute, um, I want to talk to you about Fitch Street. Because it's really critical that the commissioners, before you make a decision, understand the reality of what's being recommended to you that you consider. Um, uh, first of all, just some, some prepared stuff. I want to, I want to start with the obvious. Um, again, because residents don't have the final say in, in zoning, uh, decisions and in procedures. We're left to kind of sit helplessly through, um, the rebuttal that the applicant's attorney will do. And, um, there's nothing that we can say afterwards about, um. What the rebuttal is, um, why it's being presented. Um, we literally have to, um, remain quiet. So, um. We're often forced to spend time parsing comments that may have been made just moments before during a public hearing and we hope that you bear with us through that. But also to dissect them to figure out, um, hopefully what Attorney Suchi might, um, um. Uh, try to debunk or even trivialize. In terms of what the residents' concerns are that they're sharing with you. Tonight, we'll do our best to confidently point out, though, the flaws, omissions, inadequacy and ambiguity in the site plan review application. I'm hoping that you've read the dozens of letters that came in where we have ordinary. East Norwalk residents who live in the community. Who sent in concerns to you that you should consider that have not yet been addressed. And you don't see them addressed in the application materials. More importantly than that, you'll see that these residents also provided you lists of questions. That should have been answered before this became, came before you. But they have not been answered and quite frankly, we were hoping that some of you would actually ask some of these questions. The ones that were sent in, the letters that were sent in recently, still contain questions that have not been asked. And they're not going to be offered in the absence of our commissioners asking those questions. Most importantly, because this is a site plan review. Um, because staff defined and presented it, um, in this, in, in the industrial zone study, um, project that you approved. We'll remind you of the compelling and convincing expert testimony you heard. And read from ENNA's hired, um, consultants regarding air quality concerns and traffic implications. As you know, um, had this use been added in, um, for that parcel or any parcel. Under normal conditions, this would have been a special permit. And I, and I think that you all recognize that. That special permit would have afforded this community, um, the option for you to use your discretion on thirteen different criteria. That helps to protect our community. But because it was presented to you and approved actually by this commission, um, as a site plan review. Um, the public no longer has that benefit. However, we do have some benefits. Um, to begin with. Um, and, and actually I'll get to those in, in a minute. I just want to backtrack on some history. You may recall in twenty twenty one, when the industrial zone study of recommendations came out that the, the. The, the study that the city funded and commissioned. Those consultants went to great lengths in that study. To advise the city to conduct, to, to fund and commission a standalone study for Norton Place. Instead, staff and the commission chose to fund and commission. An independent study for the waterfront industrial use. Now that's okay, but it was with the anticipation that in the next budget cycle. That the city indeed would fund a separate Norton, uh, parcel, uh, study. The reason why the consultant recommended it and devoted a whole chapter to it, I believe it's chapter two. Um, because they recognize, as you recognize, that Norton is so unique. It could not be classified in a cookie cutter industrial zone. It's unique in size, its location, its history and its layouts. Um, I have a number of quotes from the study. I'm not going to go through them. Um, I would hope that after what you hear tonight, that you probably, um, or shouldn't be prepared to make a decision on this. And if that's the case. I encourage you to go back and read the actual comments and recommendations from the consultant of the industrial zone study and see for your. from the consultant of the industrial zone study and see for yourself why they thought it was so important to do this. And had it been done, we wouldn't be in the position we're in tonight. Although the commission ultimately approved what we thought was a temporary designation of industrial zone two for Norton, because they had to give it some designation. And despite Mr. Kleppen removing several items that we did say were so objectionable, they should come out and you agreed with those. The community was still left with a looming prospect of some extremely negative uses. Of those, one of which ENNA begged him and your commission to remove was a use that hadn't existed before and was added to the zone. The site plan you're considering tonight is ultimately for a use that was added specifically in the timeframe of the property owners by their own admission had been working for quote years on bringing this type of use in. And if you go back and you take a look at the timeline on this, it is directly related to 2021, when the original application for a warehouse distribution center was subsequently withdrawn. Immediately after that, in conjunction with the industrial zone study, was the work, studies, traffic reports, and everything else that would support putting in a zone into Norton that would support this application. Now, I know, Mr. Kleppen, and I know that you also don't appreciate me mentioning it, but I'm not going to let the record go by without me standing here saying that if this doesn't look like spot zoning, I'm not sure what does. Another reason that back, another evidence that backs that up is because this use didn't exist in the prior regulations prior to the industrial zone study. And in fact, it doesn't exist under the zoning regulations as of February 19th. When it was added in as a brand new use, I would think, and I think you agree, that putting in a brand new use, at the very least, that staff would provide you with a definition of the use. Now, Mr. Kleppen has written back to ENNA to say that there are many uses that are within our zoning guidelines that don't have specific definitions. And I get that. Some of them have been there for ages. Some of them, you did attempt to clean up in the last zoning rewrite. But how on earth do you put in a brand new use and you don't bother to give your commission a definition of what that use is? And so as of today, we also contend that it's more than a matter of semantics. And you have before you tonight, something called a transit, a transportation maintenance terminal. Okay, now talking about the site plan review and the approval. Staff and Attorney Sachi will remind you that under Connecticut state statutes, you must approve the plan if it meets the regulation of the zone. They will do their best to convince you that it does. The public is relying on you, the commissioners, to not simply take staff's word for it, that in their opinion it complies. The public wants to know if you have examined it thoroughly and reached that conclusion. If you've read the extraordinary letters from residents questioning the use of the parcel, the storage of materials, the location of employee versus contractor contractor equipment and storage, and the operation of the indoor building, which we were not allowed to view during the site tour that they were gracious enough to provide. The storage of the materials, the location of the employee versus, oh, I'm sorry. And the operation of the indoor building, the traffic plan that merely attempts to jockey large trucks on the parcel that despite Ms. Attorney Sachi informing the Conservation Inland Wetlands Authority that no construction or regulated site use is involved. This was for the subdivision that also came before you. The application does reference the need for construction to allow for parking and storage. And it does reference what surely must be a regulated activity. I'm no expert on inland wetlands, but I hope that you'll consult with staff and you'll get the answer to this yourself. I would think that regulated activity would not only include the storage and movement of treated lumber, that your applicant is suggesting that, I believe they're going to cover with some tarp and some other materials to try to not have it get wet and contaminate downstream, which is, which first of all, is the wetlands, much less the residential properties that are across the track. And also, we don't have enough information about the onsite storage of cleaners. And based on what they're talking about with plumbing, welding, et cetera, in their shops that are, will be within the structure, I think it's a safe bet to say that those cleaners will be solvents as well. Even if you brought into the proposed site plan, and we'll have to impose a slew of conditions to even make that work, the real issue comes down to what discretion do you actually have under a site plan review? There are several. But in this, in this application, there are actually two, there's actually three, but there's two that I'll talk about that you simply can't and should not ignore. And that we believe that with this, you can actually use it as a basis for denial, even though you're being told compliance with the regulations means that you have to pass it. It's the reason why these considerations are in there and they ask you to take them into account. The first is traffic and your regulations, they define it as stable traffic, which I think is just so discretionary and I'm not, I'm not quite sure why that even stays in there as a definition, but we hope that you've read the applicant's documents, especially a copy and paste. It's essentially a copy and paste of the modifications of the prior warehouse distribution center traffic. In fact, if you look at the work that was done by Ty and Bond, the report isn't presented to the current owner, Norton Center LLC. It's presented to Benneroff Properties, the presumed prospective co-owner, should this be approved. Though the truck traffic may be less intense than what the warehouse distribution center or what people are still referring to as the Amazon Last Mile Center, it would be less intense than that. The fact remains that there'll be plenty of them, along with small trucks and vehicles. And as with the first application, the traffic engineers completely ignore the one major access point, East Avenue and I-95. Now, this commission and other people that were on this commission, this was a major area of contention in the first go around of why East Avenue and I-95 were not taken into account. I can't imagine that you would look at this application then and continue to ignore it. And we hope that you will go back and challenge the applicant's experts and the applicant as to why they're continuing to ignore East Avenue. ENNA, as the opponents, also hired an expert consultant to review both the applicant's study and the city's third party review. And as you read and heard, Mr. Monteleone had questioned and refuted many of the models used by both and calls into question virtually every conclusion in their report. Most serious, the fact that they continue to leave out East Avenue and the highway. How can you possibly accept such a report? I wanted to refresh your memory with just a couple of quotes from that. One moment. Pardon me, I thought I had these in order here. Okay, obviously, the East Avenue situation. Also, Mr. Monteleone, who, as you know, as you know, he was presented as an expert, said that unfortunately, once the application is approved by this commission, the local residents would be severely limited in available remedies if the staff schedule changes and if the number of vehicles produced by the project is higher during the AM and PM peak hours. He went on to say that the study area with East Avenue is not just East Avenue at the highway, but also at Hendrix, at the ramps, at St. John and Raymond Terrace, at East Avenue and Myrtle, and East Avenue and Fitch. Recommended that the applicant revise the traffic analysis using the reasonable worst case. And noted that the north left bound queues at Strawberry Hill Avenue and Beacon Street intersection during the weekday AM peak hours will be exacerbated using the reasonable worst case scenario traffic. Due to the excess, I wish there was some lighting up here, I'm sorry. Due to the excess access routes to this site, it was his professional opinion that the plan, as is adversely impacts the East Avenue Strawberry Hills census tract. I'm sorry, that was from the air environmental study. And let me jump ahead here for a second in terms of traffic. You've already seen in some of your documents where, oh, thanks. I think I'm okay now, but thank you. You've already seen in some of your documents where there's been reference to the lack of an appropriate turning radius on Fitch at the intersection of Strawberry Hill, but also at the intersection of East Avenue. Now, the reason why that turning radius would be considered inadequate is for tractor trailer trucks. Ty and Bond suggested to you that modifications could be there, could be made there for W-62s, I think they call them, a smaller size of a tractor trailer. But have also been working and consulting with our own Transportation Mobility and Parking Department, who actually have a conceptual plan, right now, a drawing that's in your packets that would suggest that we should modify our street, Fitch Street at Strawberry Hill, to be able to accommodate large tractor trailers, WB-67s, which I think fall into some 70-plus foot category. They also presented to you, and I don't know why they did this. They said that they were looking at that concept because they had inquiries from residents who were interested in making that a safer intersection, but not doing it by means of putting in a stop sign or a traffic light. Now, let me tell you about that. Several years ago, before the city's traffic engineer, Mike Yosak, left the city, he did receive requests from residents to take a look at that intersection to make it safer. Okay? That request came in from ENNA. So we are very familiar with what we're talking about with this intersection. At one time, there was a discussion about putting a traffic light there. And not only were we concerned about a light, because then you have no sightline that seems reasonable coming under the railroad bridge at Strawberry Hill, but we're concerned because every time you put in a light, every time you put in a stop sign, and every time we have a no turn on red that's not legitimately there for safety, you have a car that's stopping and starting. And you have emissions and you have pollution. And to Ms. Hunter's point this evening as well, you also have a car that's contributing to that ground level contamination of the fine particulates as well. And so what happened with that is that Mr. Yosak then did a conceptual version of what a roundabout would be at Fitch. And he went to the Traffic Authority and said, this is something that I think we should consider. And when he did that, I just want to read you a couple of items so that you can see that what the applicant is proposing to you is completely counterintuitive to what our community and you should be considering about modifying roads for safety and for pedestrians and for our community. At the Traffic Authority meeting in February of 2021, following that, there was an article done on the local news blog, Nancy, on Nowak. They made a reference in there that the meeting saw a debut of a roundabout plan for Fitch and Strawberry Hill. Identified it as a concept plan and did say that there was no funding for it at that point. I'd like to quote the, now, the Mayor Harry Rilling, as you know, sits on the, on the Traffic Authority and is the chair. And he was quoted as saying, I do like the idea of roundabouts that they're properly sized and designed. I would look at this as a possible opportunity for that to happen there, keeping in mind that we're an old city and people are used to certain things, but when we make significant changes, people need to be aware and be introduced to a new concept. Commissioner Collier went on to say, looking at the draft rendering, it looks like a good possibility for us to have. It would be really helpful for the traffic flow. And then, at the time, then-current commissioner on the Traffic Authority, Kelly Stranidi, said, I'm open to see how it works. And I think if anything, you know, that it's definitely a good intersection to do this as a test. Then Chief of Police Coholic went on to say, I can't tell you about accidents, but from using them, quite often, they work great. And then finally, one of the commissioners asked Engineer Yosak about the impact on the road in terms of any takings of property. And he confirmed that in his drawings and their engineering design that, that there would be no property takings in order to achieve that. So wherever you're reading and you're listening to a plan to change our roads in East Nowak for the sole purpose of accommodating tractor trailers for a parcel that we will continue to debate, to debate why we haven't had the discussion yet of a study and best uses for that parcel. And then you add on to that, that what you'd be doing, using it for is for the MTA for a regional benefit that serves no regional, that serves no local benefit for, for Nowak at all. Okay, and in terms of regarding how insulting it is that you would consider changing Fitch Street, we wanted to say that in terms of the exit 16, it's completely unacceptable that a recommendation is being considered to change, to try to change even the signage there. We have decorative signage at our highway exits. And the applicant or TMP is recommending that then you have signage there that includes their parcel. I don't know if it would say MTA or Metro North or Maintenance Facility, but that really adds insult to injury for us. ENNA agrees with Mr. Monteleone's blunt analysis of the applicant being willing to quote, "conduct a six-month post-occupancy traffic review." This is insulting the intelligence of every East Nowaker. To what end would that serve? There's zero recourse after the fact. And even if you believe that a six-month review would be done and analyzed, let me ask you, when you might expect to see one that this commission required of 230 East Avenue, Brim and Crown? It has never been done. And yet, when you approved that, and many residents opposed it, one of the things that were provided to, you know, comfort everyone about the traffic impacts is, don't worry about it. We'll do a six-month post-occupancy review and see how things are going. Mr. Kleppen can tell you, it doesn't exist because we asked for it with the Cemetery Street application and the study either was never done or not provided. It certainly wasn't provided to us if they have it. In terms of, in terms of a six-month review and any other conditions you may be considering, I don't want to sound like a broken record, you guys, but I do want to say that residents recognize that conditions in Nowak are written on ice cubes normally. They're there and then they disappear. No, no one is enforcing them. And sometimes the conditions that you impose, the ones that would protect us the most are the very conditions, the first ones that an applicant will come back and either cry hardship because it's not financially viable for them to be able to comply with what you asked them to do. Or they'll come back and they say they discovered some other, some other impact that's preventing them from doing it. But not that they identified to you in the beginning when they agreed to do what you asked them to do. Okay, the next and most important is the possible environmental justice battleground issue. You saw in the brilliant, albeit limited, of course, we don't have unlimited funds, the air quality analysis submitted and presented by Dr. Devki Desai. You may want to dismiss her conclusions, but you cannot dismiss the actual numbers that mean your approval of this site plan will further increase the pollutants in East Nowak and put the city into a whole new level of violations of the EPA regulations that Dr. Desai told you were approved February 6th and effective May 6th. The percentages of increases may seem insignificant to some of you, but contributing incrementally in an environmentally, environmental justice tract designated area that's already above the federal standards ozone and CO2 is a violation. that's already above the federal standards ozone and CO2 is a violation. And so you're aware of it, she's made you aware of it, and you're possibly going to vote on an action that will say, we don't care about that, we're going to increase it anyway. Even if you're not concerned with fines, we're going to consider the ineffective mitigation of this. Please consider that from the time this operation site plan becomes active, it will be adding ground level and pedestrian level pollution. The applicant cannot defend this by saying that they don't own the exhaust that their vehicles, employees and deliveries will make. You received the latest submission, I believe it was this afternoon, from Dr. Desai, indicating rebutting some of the responses that were received back by SLR. And I do want to say then that to add as well that ENNA then would like to request that there be an opportunity that that we would have to have Dr. Desai review the applicant's potential mitigation plan. I may say that in reference because in the document you received today, she makes a specific request at the end of that for this commission to require the applicant and SLR to come back and provide you with a mitigation plan that addresses all of the points that she raised in her, in her, in her report to you. Okay, a few other things that we want to get on the record. There, I don't think there's going to be any debate over this, but when you're talking about notifying the neighbors that are going to be most impacted. We, we have determined that the the legal definition of adjacent would include all the properties that otherwise would not have been separated by the railway. And when we looked at the site plan application, we noticed that Attorney Suchi's office neglected to notify those homeowners. I believe it's Fordham, it's Fordham, Heron, Howard, and there may be one more. So they are not within the notification process, they would not have even known about this application. And those would be considered adjacent properties. Even by Director Kleppen's standards, he provided comment back to the community that said that he considered adjacent also to be a near, a property that's near the parcel. I also want to add again that we don't think this is a matter of semantics, but when you take a look at how this application came into you under a new use that's not defined, it says transportation maintenance terminal. And because there's no definition of it versus something maybe called a facility, some of the residents did their own due diligence and provided you with letters, one of which is missing from the website today, by the way, that you should have, but the public doesn't have, that speaks about the fact that if you don't have a definition of it, then the public is left to only go and find the definition that the MTA and Metro North Railroad uses. When you look at those definitions, we would say that this is not what you're considering this evening. What you are considering this evening falls much closer into other uses that were already in the zone that you could have been asked to consider. But almost every one of those uses required a special permit. I'm sorry, I'm almost done, but I don't want to have an opportunity to not have this on the record. You've already heard about the conflicts with the city plans for greener city, a walkable city, complete streets, and the impact on TOD. Okay, and then in conclusion from Dr. Desai's letter to you today on her rebuttal, the, she said that she respectfully requests own admission to recommend substantive and enforceable changes to the proposed plan as a condition for consideration. And she goes on to say that, given that she requested the applicant and their representative present constructive solutions at the five twenty-two hearing upon ENNA's consultant and resident comments that were presented to you from us on the, on the first and the eighth. Okay, I just want to rattle off a few things in closing again, so they're in the record. We were surprised to find that despite the claims of the applicant based on their presumably other locations, that staff or the commission didn't request an acoustical impact analysis for this parcel, especially given the its location relevant to the all of the surrounding residential parcels that surround it. The study area also does not appear to include the DOT parking facility at East Avenue next to Rite Aid, which was purchased with taxpayer funds. We bring that up because the applicant has shown no interest or desire. There's certainly not going to be a commitment, they've already told you that, that they're not going to consider having a shuttle for their employees to park their radar off the highway and not congest our streets and then be able to provide them with a shuttle. They also said that they will not consider, nor do they desire to have a shuttle from the East Now Walk train station for their employees. If you're not in East Now Walk all the time, you may not know that there are a few predictable cut-throughs. I will admit here on the record that I'm guilty of them myself. People that are trying to take a shortcut up to Strawberry Hill quickly often will come off of I ninety-five, turn into the Rite Aid parking lot, come out onto St. John and go across East Avenue up the hill. The alternative to that is to go all the way down to Fitch and then turn there and then come back up Strawberry Hill. If you observe at Rite Aid, you will see dozens and dozens and dozens of times a day where people do that. It will not take MTA employees very long to know that that's the path of least resistance to get up that hill there. Someone else has already mentioned that you might not know that Myrtle is a cut-through coming back. So when they're going westbound, they're not going to go down to Fitch necessarily and come out to Fitch where I believe there's still a no turn on red and you need a signal. They are going to come down Myrtle. And I spoke with a resident on Myrtle just the other day who confirmed that that is the case and that she personally has observed that this has increased in the past several months. I know that that you know, a lot of that is related to the walk bridge, but we also sense that maybe some of this is now related to both the nursery and to the MTA. If we had someone here from the police department, they could also testify to you the percentage of illegal left turns onto Raymond and Myrtle, that happens every day. And the inadequate turn radius at East Avenue and Fitch. Earlier today, we submitted some pictures into Mr. Kleppen that actually show large tractor trailers forcing cars that are in their own lane to either back up or to move, to try to maneuver to get out of the way for them to make turns. This was on both Fitch and on Winfield and East Avenue where the station house is. The MTA acknowledges the proximity of the East Now Walk station being within a twenty-minute walk and also served by Now Walk Transit Wheels, but have done no analysis of employee usage. And again, they're not interested in providing a shuttle. The applicant talked to you about why they believe bicycle and pedestrian access is adequate and safe, but they don't take into account on those roads where snow is impeding the sidewalk, where we have students who have to cross into the street and where there are cars that are parked next to the bike lanes, creating a hazard as well. And I believe that you heard from someone on Myrtle as well that there's existing sightline issues there despite some improvements that the Traffic Authority actually just approved on Monday, but they're not going to remedy those. Someone already spoke about Now Walk High School and the future Now Walk High School, also the construction leading up to it. It is, I think, intended to be a regional high school, so there is going to be more traffic there. And I can speak to this from my own experience. This facility is actually going to operate more like a construction, storage and dispatch facility. If you think of something more along the lines of, you know, like a big roofing company that would have all their trucks there and their vehicles, and their employees would come in their own vehicles in the morning, and they would park their vehicles, they would load up the big trucks with roofing materials. All the roofing materials would be stored on the lot. This is more of what this type of operation would be, but on a larger scale. And by the way, I think Mr. Kleppen can tell you that that operation itself would require a special permit. And yet this one doesn't. The nature of dispatch in the industry, especially with multiple crew members, suggests two things, and I've been in three industries that this, working personally that this applies to. Workers that are on a shift who are late are going to race and drive recklessly to get to work on time. It's a fact. And when they're done with their job, they're also going to want to punch out and get out of there and get to wherever they're going as quickly as they can. The nature of dispatch, though, and we don't have the information from the applicant, is that you're normally dispatching a number of crews and giving them their assignments over, say, a one or two-hour period in the morning. If that dispatch is not happening with inside those bay doors that they tell us are going to be essentially kept closed at all times, the dispatch happens in the yard. And so that all of those voices and all the noise and all the chatter and all the laughter and all the music and all the trucks for that whole dispatch period, again, often taking one to two hours on a, and on a fleet this size, is going to impact the neighbors. It's going to especially impact them in the wintertime when there's less foliage and no humidity. It just travels right in as if they're in your backyard. One of their mitigation remedies that they've suggested to you is almost laughable, honestly, but they're, when they're talking about Strawberry and Beacon, they've suggested to you, and TMP, I believe, has supported it, that one remedy is don't block the box. And so not only is that not obeyed in most cities, I can tell you, living on Olmsted, people seldom obey that. It hasn't proved in recent years, but a lot of people don't obey that because then someone's going to cut in front of them and they want to make sure that they have their lane there. The other problem with that, and again, the chief of police can tell you this because we went through this with Olmsted. In order for don't block the box to be effective, you must have a means of safely pulling over a violator. And the chief of police back then and also the assistant chief of police were explicit in telling the Public Works Department at that time that that's exactly what the case is. If you can visualize in your heads right now Beacon and Strawberry Hill and think about don't block the boxes here at Norton and at Beacon, it's not conceivable that that police patrol would actually be able to monitor from a property or be able to safely pull over a vehicle as a violation. They suggested to us that pulling someone over in some instances actually creates more of a safety issue than the gridlock they created to begin with. The other problem with don't block the box is it gives cars that are crossing into the intersection a false sense of security because they see the hash marks and they assume that people are going to stop. And then so they start to come out, and by the time you realize they're not stopping, you're, you've got a bad situation there. Using radar signals to alert a driver to speeding on Norton Place. I mean, it's kind of a feel-good thing. Again, it's not enforceable, the city doesn't have the funding to, to, to put patrol cars there to enforce this. And, you know, most people aren't going to pay attention to it anyway. Okay. This is, this is my final point here. If, if you were considering this as a site plan review, and forget everything else that I said to you about the fact that we completely disagree with the process that brought this to you in that manner. But if you're going to consider this as a site plan review, then I think one of the things that you should, and I think that you're able to take into account in addition to the traffic, the noise, the impact on the community for the standards that are within the regulations, is that you should be able to weigh this application at that site and the negative impact on our community from those three points, and then take a look and say, what are the benefits to the Now Walk community? And I think Mr. Bellis, if he's still here, started to articulate that. So number one would be grand list. We know that there's a vision for the city where we're looking to do development, that's smart development, but that adds to our grand list revenue. The, the property is already paying property tax. You're going to get that property tax whether it sits empty or not. We are not privy to what the lease terms are to the MTA, so we're never going to know that. We don't know the dollar value, and we don't know the length of the term of the lease. But if the taxes are supposed to go up exponentially based on what the value of the lease is to the property owner, you're never going to know that either. Because those numbers, per the tax assessor, are not public information and they're never disclosed. Not only aren't they disclosed, okay, they are done on the honor system. It's simply a form that a commercial landlord fills out that says, this is what our revenue is coming in from this operation. When we looked at the form, it didn't even have anything on there, for Pete's sakes, it said under penalty of law. And then if it did, we couldn't even find a state statute that would be able to enforce that. The MTA also, we've discovered, is a tax exempt organization. So their, their equipment, their machinery, anything having to do with vehicles that are registered to them, no tax red, no tax required. I haven't confirmed this one, and I'll apologize to whoever gave it, only because I need to, I need to be able to do my own due diligence, but I've been told that the MTA and their vehicles aren't, they don't even pay tax on gasoline. So while they are using our roads and we have these big trucks and they're destroying our roads, it's not even the benefit of what the gasoline would be when, you know, when they're gassing, you know, up in Connecticut. Which brings the other question too, that since there's no gasoline facility, refueling facility on site, which is a darn good thing, you probably can bet that either in the afternoon or in the morning, they'll be fueling on East Avenue, contributing to yet another traffic disaster there. The other thing to take into account, if you were trying to figure out, like, you know, how much of a benefit this could be to the community, would be how many jobs there would be. So this was very sketchy in the beginning. The, originally, we had information that said these were most likely going to be relocated positions. Very recently, you just learned now that the MTA is telling you they expect to hire up to a hundred employees. However, we don't know if these are relocated. Folks who are going to bid for these jobs to be maybe closer to their homes, and the other jobs are going to be in Westchester County. We don't have that information, they're probably not required to give you that information. They may not have the information yet. But if you're hanging your hat on getting a hundred well-paying jobs, I would also ask you then to say that there's probably little you can do to entice this applicant to make a concerted effort to hire, to train, hire and to train, recruit and hire Now Walk employees, I mean, Now Walk residents. Another question that I didn't see in the documents, and I hope you'll ask, is I suspect that with this type of operation, the MTA will also have a number of subcontractors. They haven't mentioned that at all. And because they do drainage work and, and work that maintains the, the right of way for the tracks, my guess would be that they, that they on occasion, or perhaps all the time, use subcontractors. And I wonder how they're going to manage that with dispatch controlling their access to the property, et cetera, and what's going to be stored there, that would be the contractor's vehicles. You saw the MTA's policy, which I think is a good one, that stipulates no vehicle can idle on site. And I think it's good, but again, it's not enforceable. You're going to have vehicles there in the dead of winter where their drivers are going to want to warm up the vehicle, and I doubt that they have some sort of idling police to be able to monitor that. If the vehicles are fitted with something, it's going to be something that they, that they enforce after the fact. The same thing in the summer, we'll have idling vehicles with the, with the air conditioning. When you come onto a site where you're being dispatched and you're going from one vehicle to another and you're trying to get people out in the order that they need to go to job sites, and you're trying to get people out in the order that they need to go to job sites, we have what we call "vehicle jockeying." And when that happens, you're going to have horns blowing. You're going to have excessive beep, beep, beep. Even if they have the OSHA standards for the emergency reverse mechanisms on their cars, it's still loud and it's still going to be disturbing the neighborhoods. I don't know for sure if we talked about garbage recycling and all of those operations. It's no news to this commission that in many commercial districts, they contract with garbage and recycling companies that it's their benefit to go out at 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock in the morning and get the commercial properties done. So even though it's against our ordinance, again, it's not going to be enforceable unless these neighbors are forced to reach out to the city after the fact. By the time the city responds, of course, the, the truck isn't there anymore. The applicant can probably answer this for you, but another thing that's common with dispatch centers like this is amplified external intercoms. So when they're communicating from inside the building, they could have an intercom system where they're either, you know, paging someone to come in or that something is ready or, you know, whatever the case may be. And I don't think that I've seen anywhere in their documentation if that's there. And I haven't seen anything that would suggest that you are, that you would be prohibiting that. I've already mentioned to you the storage of the lumber that would have possible creosote exposure. So I hope that's something you take into account in terms of the safety of the community. I would also say that anything that's stored like that, I don't know if there would be any kind of an issue that you need to consider for a fire hazard, but also should be considered for a rodent habitat as well within the neighborhood. The, the applicant suggests that they're going to self-enforce that the, that the bay doors be closed at all time when it's in operation for the machine shops that are in there. Again, not enforceable. I think you, actually, the other night, you heard Ms. Lorocella talk to you about the operations that are on Meadow Street, where they are required to keep the dock and the bay doors closed. And when there's no one around to enforce it, they, it's not unusual for residents to observe that they're open. So again, there's, we don't see any benefit to the community, to the Norwalk community. Everything related to this, we see as something that's going to impact us in a negative, in a negative manner. The very nature of the, the operation there suggests that, you know, this is industrial and even though Norton is technically an industrial zone, we have long tried to get the city and the commission to modify that at a time when it's easiest to do. That parcel has been empty for some time now and I don't think that we should continue to look to put industrial uses in there. I'm not sure what efforts the city has made with the property owner or on our own to try to get something in there that's less offensive. But if this application doesn't go forward, we would certainly hope that, one, that if it's not already in the bu, in the budget, that you ask Director Kleppen to make sure that the Norton study does get funded and commissioned so, so that we can work with professionals to see what should be there. And should you be inclined to have a lot more questions after everything that you've heard tonight? I understand that you can do a denial of this application, but without prejudice. And so the applicant can go back and address a number of issues, talk about conditions and that were raised by our air quality expert, also address many of the traffic concerns and that they would be able to come back to you and the commission without having to start the process all over again. I just don't want to close without saying that on behalf of the East Norwalk community, we represent over 4,000 households. The residents are clearly opposed to this. You saw that in the petition, you've seen that in the letters and the people that came here to speak to you. And we strongly urge you to deny the site plan and send this back to the drawing board or away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take a break now. We'll come back together at 9:00 PM. All right. We're going to, we're going to come back together. We have apparently two additional speakers, one in the audience and one online. Let's hear from them before we give Attorney Satchi an opportunity to begin her, her response. So please, come on up. Just give us your name and your address.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Lou DiCanto. I have 10 Howard Avenue in East Norwalk. This board has had a big hand in writing, rewriting the zoning regulations in Norwalk. For the life of me, I can't figure out why we took away some industrial uses down in South Norwalk and now we're starting to push them into East Norwalk. For over a decade, no one's had that type of traffic or equipment or people out looking for other properties to put their businesses in. And it's going to create more traffic. It's going to create more opportunities for people, children, in the school zones to be hurt. God forbid that would ever happen. I don't see, you know, there's traffic studies that are done and I understand that. But it, it just seems like you're moving businesses away from an area that was primarily a business zone, including the nursery that was moved out of South Norwalk where the school's going and they moved into East Norwalk now. Even their traffic now hampers the streets. I've seen it very closely with cars, tractor trailers already moving through there. The landscapers all coming in for their equipment and their supplies at that location. I think this is a bad idea, moving this, this, this type of business into this neighborhood. I don't know why they were left out of the zoning rewrite. Maybe at some points, this should have been looked at, that maybe another use shouldn't be used for this property. I don't think the person should, who owns the property should be, have a detrimental use to their property, but I think they should have been, maybe thought of something else that would be more fitting for the neighborhood in East Norwalk. The people in East Norwalk didn't sign up for this. They didn't move into a neighborhood where there was commercial trucks moving in and out of. This is brand new for them. Okay, and although there might have been hundreds of employees there, it's been over a decade without that kind of use. There's no reason why we'd have to move truck traffic in there because there's no other place in Norwalk to push them. I think it's a bad idea. I don't think anybody wants to see anybody get hurt. But the amount of children, parents with children walking streets down these, down these roads. And again, I don't want to reiterate, but having them around these trucks going through these neighborhoods, we see already there's tractor-trailer loads, a plant's going in there now. There's, and I, I understand that that zoning was just allowed to be used. I understand that. But I can't understand why the zoning rewrite didn't address this earlier unless somebody had some prior knowledge that this couldn't happen here. Again, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it. I was late.
Thank you. This is not, this is not a conversation between you and us, but I will mention that for six years, I lived at 12 Howard Avenue. We have someone online?
One more, yes. Diane Lorocella?
Yes. Good evening. For the record, my name is Diane Lorocella, 21 Little Fox Lane in West Norwalk. I thank you, I thank the commissioners for holding this series of hearings. I know we're near the end. I was moved to speak based upon some of the public that spoke before me, Miss Sisi's very thorough review, as well as especially as the applicant's presentation. So I will be quite brief because I do, I am one in the city who is on record of upholding and encouraging industrial zones to be preserved. I was against Spinnaker putting in the Norton apartments. I felt we could find good neighbors, clean industry that would provide good jobs. In this case, as you know, oftentimes, the applicant's attorney, Ms. Suchi, will tell you what your job is and which regulations you can speak on and think about, whether you have discernment or not. But what I wanted to say is that you, what you do affect your neighbors and constituents and taxpayers in Norwalk. And so I just wanted to ask the following. What I feel, based upon my 40 years in Norwalk, is that there has been a problem with enforcement of ordinances, regulations, statutes, even policies in this city. I did not say, unlike what Ms. Suchi said in her rebuttal of me with the web industry application a little while ago, I did not say that the staff never does its job and they don't do any enforcement. I said they need more support for enforcement, but they don't have it yet. In fact, the budget was cut and so several enforcement jobs were put on ice. And while, of course, you may say, "Well, we don't have any role in the budget." That is not true because you're citizens. My point is, is that your commission is supported by enforcement and education of the ord, of the regulations that your commission does represent. And I've, have always been a supporter of staff doing so. In this case, what I am most concerned about is the fact, while I appreciate the MTA, of course, would have to have an overnight shift for emergencies, either people or trees on the rail. We need our rail systems to be in good shape to keep our economy and people moving throughout the Northeast, no doubt. But the, the fact is, it's the overnight shift where there will be backup beepers, horns. There'll be possibly diesel fuel odors, especially in the winter. There might be idling and discussion that will wake up the neighborhood. And the fact is that we currently do not have the enforcement person power to make sure that this applicant or any other business knows we mean business. So they may tell you in the rebuttal in a minute that, "Oh, yes, we're going to do a good job, this and that." That's what many of the businesses say and the neighborhoods suffer when it doesn't happen. It should not be the role of the citizen to constantly be the ones that look for and report these problems. The city must do a proactive job. And so if you keep permitting through approvals of certain of these uses of the land, you are adding to the problem, not solving the problem. So I just, that's one thing. The noise levels, including possible external intercoms, make sure if you decide to approve this, that you have your usual list of two or three pages of conditions. Quite frankly, if you need that many list of conditions, you need to start a policy of disapproving without prejudice. That means that the application was missing a lot of important facts that you didn't hear. Instead of letting, there's a pattern that's forming in this commission with the staff of letting inadequate applications that are missing important information to cure or fix their application because they are allowed to come back or they're allowed to have more time for the public hearing so that they can fix a inadequate application. So this is not the only time this is the case, but it is one of the cases where there is important information missing that has, I'm not going to go over it again because so many, I'm, I'm so proud of many of the citizens of East Norwalk, especially that woman from the Sawgatac condos who very nicely spelled out potential problems with turning radius of trucks. This is the kind of thing that your peer review person should have picked up and should be telling you is a problem. I don't see it. You have three schools, not one school on Meadow Street. You have three schools on Strawberry Hill Avenue. So that has to factor in to the traffic study. Should you also ask of the health department to look at the air quality questions? You did not. Your staff did not and they should have. Not that everyone in the health department is an air quality specialist, but they have access to air quality specialists. Did you ask for the police to give you, other than the, the, the usual, I forget what the acronym is, the CAC, where everyone sits around a table, Ms. Suchi presents, then they all write, they give, give the send-off, "Oh, it's fine," or they give a few little notes. The police should have been able to answer really valid questions about enforcement of speed and the like because traffic is probably the main issue here. Should you either deny without prejudice or the applicant withdraws, which is highly unlikely, please try and urge the city, the Chamber of Commerce, the Connecticut Department of Economic, DECD, to find the right kind of industrial neighbor here. Because this neighborhood, of which I would love to live one day, I've never, I've lived only on Seaview Avenue in the past. But the thing is, they keep getting bad applications, one after another. This city has to help them get the right kind of clean industry that's a good neighbor. I do believe they exist, but if you don't look, you're never going to find them. And that is a shout-out to Jessica Casey and her people, who, of course, you are related to. So with that, I wanted to say thank you for listening. I do feel that having, demanding a shuttle be used to reduce at least some of the traffic is something that has to be a condition of the permit and that you should look at the analysis that have been suggested by many, many of these, the citizens who are like citizen scientists. You have to give more weight to citizens living near this site because they have lived experience and that does count. That does count in land use law. So thank you for your time and good evening.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we'll close the public comment period and turn it back to Attorney Suchi. I don't have a specific question for her to...
I have a question.
Pardon me?
I, I have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Right. This question is for the applicant, Eric Lindquist or Craig DeYannis. Are you still online?
I believe they are.
Oh, JJ, I'm sorry. Can I ask you to hold your, your question? Since it may be, it may be answered what I was asking.
Oh, okay.
Is there anyone online who has a question for our traffic reviewer? Okay, hearing none and Attorney Suchi. And JJ, please, when, when you feel it's appropriate, ask your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Again, for the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm harmony, torrent, send deck in Hennessy and we represent the owner of the property, Norwalk Center LLC. At this point now that the public hearing, the public comment portion is closed, we would like to bring to you Craig Yanis, who is our traffic engineer, to respond to questions, to provide clarification and to answer not only the questions raised tonight, but questions raised by the opponent's traffic consultant. And depending upon the hour, if it is still available this evening, I would then like to call Eric Lindquist to address any concerns, questions, or comments that have been raised by the public or other documents submitted from a stormwater management perspective. And then after Mr. Lindquist, again, if the hour is still available, have... And then after Mr. Lindquist, again, if the hour is still available, have Laura King of SLR uh provide to you her analysis of the air quality report um to amplify what she wrote, to respond to what uh Dr. Desai wrote. And then I think we'll probably get to the point where it's uh much too late for me to do final rebuttal comments. So we can talk at that point as to when that can take place, if that's acceptable.
Um, so far I don't hear anything objectionable, so let's move forward.
So at this point, if, if you would, Mr. Yanis, if you could come online, followed by Eric Lindquist and then Laura King.
Yes, uh, thanks, Liz. Can I, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. Uh, yeah, so for the record, Craig Yanis, project manager at Tie and Bond, uh professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, professional traffic operations engineer and roadway safety professional. I'm going to go through the comments received uh before each of the last two hearings from the neighborhood. Uh, traffic consultant Simco, as well as the AKRF uh responses um and the Norwalk TNP comments um on top of the, the public commentary that we've heard over the last three meetings. So the first thing I want to do, and I'm kind of going to weave in uh some of the public comments into these responses as we go. Uh, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So uh the first comment from TNP, I'm going to start with them. Uh, talks about the Strawberry Hill Avenue at Fitch uh Street intersection. Um, they requested that the intersection be looked at for this conceptual improvement plan that they uh I'm showing in the top right, um and asking the applicant to design and construct uh these improvements. Uh, our response is that the, the analysis show that there's no significant impact to traffic operations on the study area intersection. Um, everything is acceptable level of service. Under the uh, uh Norwalk guidelines, uh, traffic safety review did not identify any crash patterns and there was no collisions involving bikes or pedestrians at this location. Um, the, the, the ultimate crux of the challenge of this location is that this concept plan uh impacts four residential properties and their driveways, as you see in blue there. And there's no guarantee the improvements would be allowed by those residents. And uh then would um, would jeopardize the ability to, to design and construct this uh concept plan. We, we fully support this concept plan. What it does is it uh tightens up the radii. Uh, so right now in that green um area, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Um, so in this area here, the, the curb is actually out, out in this area here. So it brings that curb line in, reduces the pedestrian crossing, gets rid of the median island. Um, and I'll show a slide later that shows the turning movements are, are uh ultimately uh available to go through this intersection. Um, and there, the city's goal here is to improve the safety. Again, we didn't see any safety challenges with the intersection. But uh, but slowing, slowing down the speeds by uh decreasing that radius is, is a good thing always. And something uh that, that we think the city should consider. Um, they also have a project to the south uh that they're planning to, to include sidewalk in a gap that exists. And um, that would be a good opportunity to uh consider improvements to this intersection. Going to the next um couple of comments, um, they wanted to talk about the, the, the site frontage in Norton Place um and Triangle Street. Um, they asked for uh high visibility crosswalks across the site driveways as well as uh restriping of the roadway um of, of Norton Place from Strawberry Hill Avenue uh to Triangle Street all the way through uh to Winfield Street. So the two uh Norton Place and Triangle Street uh roadways combined um as well as some planting uh plantings. So a few things on that, the applicant, um, you know, understands the comments and, and they're, they're uh, were willing to put in the the striping on the, of the crosswalks across the driveways. That's a standard thing that, that is needed. Um, you can see some pictures of the roadway in the center of the screen there that have the striping that exists uh today, uh and there's, there's shared lane use markings which um for bikes that you, that you can somewhat see in the, in the little portions here. And then the layout of the median and the left turn lane at the, at the, the uh southern driveway where the trucks will come in and out. Um, so ultimately, we're hoping through the striping of the crosswalks and radar speed signs that were, were mentioned in the, in the past. So those are shown in the top right where it senses your speed and then tells you the speed limit. Um, and, and um ultimately shows that show, like kind of gives feedback to the driver that they're, what their speed they're going, um, and that's something that uh we think could be effective in, in uh calming traffic along the, along the segment. As well as enforcement, right? We talked about enforcement. Enforcement's a big part of it and um, and to the comments about uh enforcement and not having the, the resources. There is an option, right, to, to now, um, as of the first of the year, to, to install automated enforcement. So if you, if you as a city, uh, you know, deem it possible, and, and I, I think the, the city staff at TNP is already working on this, allowing automated enforcement for speed and red light running. Um, that's something that the city can sponsor. It's nothing that the applicant or any private owner can do. Uh, the city can sponsor that and, and put it in and go through the proper channels with the state to get it installed. And in, in terms of the comment about the trees, you can see in the bottom part of the screen, the, the screening. The site's been carefully designed to screen the parking and the site activities. Uh, there's a lot of uh tree cover, as you can see on the right hand side of that top middle picture. Uh, the gap exists in the middle there to allow a vista to the building. Without seeing a lot of the cars, you can't see the parking lot that's behind this berm here. Um, and this is again from a, a Google uh street view camera that's, that's higher in the air than, than the normal passenger car eye. Um, so you would, you really only see the building at that point. Um, and, and the other part of this response is considering uh a follow-up traffic study, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. Um, there's restriping can be considered then. Uh, we can reassess the traffic speeds once the radar speed signs have gone in and see if that persists as an issue and then uh assess a restriping at that, at that point. Um, I am going to backtrack though, uh, one slide here. So I did want to mention something else about the Strawberry Hill Avenue intersection. Um, a- a- as Ms. CC um presented about the different options to improve this intersection. Uh, the TNP staff again provided this, this graphic in the top right. We addressed the, the other options of this intersection in the traffic study in section five point two point two, uh which included stop signs, a traffic signal, a mini roundabout um at this location and, and none of them we feel are appropriate. And, and, and the first couple of reasons were mentioned by uh by Ms. CC, um, the stop signs and the traffic lights would impede traffic on Strawberry Hill Avenue. And we've shown via our traffic analysis that that's not necessary. Um, and in, in addition to that, it would be difficult for this intersection with the current flows that it has to meet the, the uh national standard, the manual, manual uniform of traffic control devices to allow uh additional stop signs or, or a stop signal, um, which we mentioned in our report. Um, the idea of a previous idea uh to, to install a mini roundabout at this location. Uh, Strawberry Hill Avenue and Fitz Street are minor arterials. They have truck traffic. Um, when it comes to roundabouts, I'm a huge proponent. Uh, there are safety and oper- operational benefits for them. Tie and Bond and I personally have designed and managed in uh the construction of several roundabouts across the state. And we're, we're assessing adequate locations statewide. Um, ultimately, this location is not appropriate for a mini roundabout for, for the reasons of the truck traffic, the truck traffic that exists today, that has nothing to do with the applicant itself. Um, a mini roundabout requires that all vehicles traverse the center median island that would have to be put in. And it not only includes truck traffic, it also includes bus traffic, and it's something that's, that's uncomfortable. Um, whilst, whilst significantly slowing speeds, it's something that, that really impedes the traffic operations. Um, and, and also within those mini roundabouts, the trucks need to take the entire extent of the right of way in order to make those turns. Uh, if we were to consider a, a full size standard roundabout here, that would require huge property impacts on, on all three corners, including potentially uh some takings and uh building impacts that uh cannot be borne uh by this applicant, and um there's reasons why this hasn't been that, that the mini roundabout idea or the roundabout idea was, was uh pursued in the past. So going back to, to the comments, uh, um, so comment number three, the follow-up traffic study. Uh, as I wrote in the letter there, the applicant's more than willing to provide that follow-up traffic study. Uh, there's another comment further in, from, from Simco here that I'm going to address that further, but but it's a standard practice of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, we're more than happy to provide that follow-up traffic study. Um, there was a fourth comment about a crash report request. Uh, we, we submitted the requested information, which uh basically was just more detailed information on what was provided. And um, to this date, we haven't gotten any further comments from uh Norwalk TNP. So moving on to the, the two comments from AKRF, uh, again, they've, they've endorsed the, the traffic report and, and the various documents that we've, we've provided. They had two additional comments. One was uh an updated traffic report, which the applicant is, is more than willing to put together at the end of this planning and zoning process, making sure that we incorporate all the different things that were, were mentioned at this meeting and, and others. Um, the other one was, was the same commentary about the uh, the Norton Place and site frontage. So their comments uh were limited to restriping between or along the driveways uh to, to include a shoulder line, include an uh, a, a median, a wider median to, to restrict the travel lanes. And again, uh, we, we would like to install the radar speed signs, stripe the crosswalks across the driveways and then come up with the follow-up study uh to see what impacts that has on the uh traffic speeds along Norton Place. And, and really along the site frontage, which would benefit everyone. Okay, so now uh going over to the Simco comments, the neighborhood um traffic consultant. The first comment had to, to discuss the site traffic and the, and the volume of the site traffic. Uh, the commentary basically said uh a reasonable worst case scenario where all of the trips become become part of the peak hour, which is certainly not industry standard practice and as we heard from AKRF, it's, it's not a reasonable worst case. Um, our analysis did present a reasonable worst case scenario. We utilized IT rates, which were higher than uh the operation plan estimates on purpose uh to make sure that we were conservative. We added nursery traffic at their request. And we also looked at a potential future development uh traffic uh scenario with a three hundred thousand square foot data center. And all that traffic combined was, was uh in the area of what was requested in the follow-up letter from, from Simco, which we received uh today. Uh, and kind of mimicked what uh was spoken at the last hearing. We're, we're essentially at that a hundred and twenty trips in the peak hour. Um, we feel that's appropriate. Uh, the analysis shows that the intersections operate at acceptable levels of service with all that traffic added. Um, as mentioned at the bottom. Comments two through five discuss the site traffic distribution, uh cut through traffic in a six-month traffic follow-up. The distribution that we presented was ultimately approved by AKRF. Um, and we have received no comments from, from TNP about it, and it's something that we've used on the site in the past with past applications and received approval from, from other groups. Uh, the distribution is based on both existing travel patterns and major routes to the corridors that facilitate regional travel. You know, we've said uh throughout the application that the territory for MTA is anything within uh the right of way on their, uh, within the right of way throughout their system. They're going to focus on those major routes. Uh, we're definitely looking towards those. We know that, we know the traffic patterns in the area. Uh, just like anybody else that's traveling, they try to avoid the congestion. So the commentary about uh the percentages going in each direction, it takes into account the fact that if you're going north, it doesn't make sense to backtrack to the west to go to East Avenue. Uh, instead, traveling to the east via Winfield Street or Route One to go, to go east and go on to a, a different uh, uh access to the, to the interstate. So it, it takes into account those distribution patterns and, and the existing travel does, is valid for this type of use because residents and other, other travelers in this area are traveling via the major routes, and that's what we expect this traffic to, to follow as well. Um, yeah, the, the commentary on cut through traffic, the applicant, applicant fully supports the city addressing the cut through traffic issues. Those are handled through the local traffic authority and or uh TNP. Um, there's been several uh improvements to uh Myrtle Avenue um and, and the adjacent street to put in uh speed humps and limit access in certain directions. Um, certainly something that can be handled by the city and cer- and certainly something we recommend. Um, and, and on as we mentioned last time, we're proposing directional signage to, on the most direct route between the site and I ninety-five along the major art, mi- minor arterials and the major arterials. So we're, we are not in any way promoting that they use uh some of the smaller cut through traffic. Um, and then as I'll get to in a minute, not a lot of our traffic is the truck traffic. Most of our traffic is passenger car traffic. Um, the other thing about the distribution that's important to note is that the analysis conservatively assumes that trips were consolidated to the study area intersections on major routes. So we could have spread it in, across every road and every cut through traffic. That would only help us because then it would, it would limit the impact on the study area intersections. That's not what we want to, we want to uh analyze. We want to make sure that the, the traffic is on those study area intersections is being counted in the model, is being assessed by the capacity analyses. And again, we're trying to get people to take the most direct routes between the site and I ninety-five. As, as uh to the six-month follow-up uh traffic study, it is standard practice by the Planning and Zoning Commission to, to uh, to perform these. I've personally conducted two for this site, one for the data center and one for the, then Avalon. Uh, I've been working on the site for over ten years. Both of those follow-up traffic studies showed that the site-generated traffic by those uses were significantly less than what was actually estimated in the traffic study. That's a very common uh situation, and, and it's purposely like that so that we analyze a conservative result and, and protect both the applicant and the communities from any impacts. Uh, what the, what the six-month follow-up does for us, it is, it allows the confirmation of the site traffic volumes via the site driveway counts, right? We're counting at the site driveways to see what we're, what we're estimates versus what is actual. It also lets us assess the uh study area intersection traffic volumes, right? Whether that's by, by the actual use itself or by other traffic growth in the area. Uh, in that six months and the, the construction plus six months, things are going to change, and that's why we're doing it. We're confirming what the volumes are and we're confirming what the traffic operations are at the opening and plus six months of the development. Going to the sixth comment, um, there was a comment about the study area in East Avenue. So obviously, this is, this has received a lot of, a lot of um thought and, and attention. The study area was selected based on the Norwalk traffic impacted and access guidelines, which, which essentially state, based on your traffic volumes and your distribution, which intersection should be part of the analysis. We coordinated before we even submitted the, the traffic study with Norwalk TNP and AKRF about the study area, and we included additional intersections that weren't required by the guidelines at their request. There, as, as we've spoken about before, there are improvements proposed for East Avenue. Those improvements should address any existing deficiencies, many of which were mentioned within this discussion. Um, and just going to the actual study area itself. Um, I just wanted to show it again so that we, we know what the study area intersections are. Um, there was a comment about Triangle Street and whether that was taken into account within the study area, it was. Um, so these, these six intersections were part of the study. They were analyzed. They show uh acceptable operations in the future conditions with all of that traffic that we, we uh discussed. Comment number seven um said that trucks should avoid using Strawberry Hill Avenue to the extent possible. Um, we, we agree that we, we want truck traffic to be on the best route, but Strawberry Hill Avenue is an arter- minor arterial roadway. It leads to a minor arterial in Fitz Street, which leads to a major arterial in East Avenue. These roadways and their classification are designed for truck traffic. They have truck traffic. They have over six hundred and sixty-six trucks a day. Uh, in, in counts that we, we uh provided in the application. So to, to say that shouldn't, they should be avoided, Strawberry Hill Avenue, Fitch and East um provide regional access for everyone in the area, for anyone that's getting a delivery by of a, a larger vehicle. Um, and, and we'll show the volumes in a minute. Most of our traffic is not truck traffic. Most of our traffic, or our traffic, truck traffic volumes are significantly pale in comparison to the existing truck traffic. There was a question um or a request for intersection site distance analysis. That's what ISD stands for at the site driveways. Uh, we provided that in the response dated May second. The site driveways meet the requirements for the expected site traffic. The last comment from Simco has to do The last comment from Simco has to do with the uh, truck turning movements. So ultimately, the primary truck route, right? So that's going up Norton. To Strawberry Hill Avenue, South to Fitz Street, to East Avenue. The primary truck route accommodates vehicles expected to be regularly accessing the ten Norton site. As I showed earlier, this this concept to redesign the Strawberry Hill Avenue and Fitz Street intersection. Under the current conditions, it it fits the largest tractor trailer truck that we see in Connecticut, the W B sixty-seven. Under the future condition, you can see by the turning movement here. Uh, if it's a W B sixty-two tractor trailer. The W B sixty-two is the tractor trailer that we expect to access the site for deliveries. And you can see that's accommodated by that turning movement.
Excuse me one second. I I just wanted to make sure I heard you right. Say that existing conditions would accommodate this um, E sixty-seven?
Uh, W B sixty-seven, that's correct. And that's shown by the Simco uh, that's shown in the Simco report. There's a turning movement for that.
What's the difference between a sixty-seven and a sixty-two?
It's the length. So a sixty-seven is seventy-three and a half feet by the by the federal designation. While the sixty-two is around sixty-nine feet total in length.
So the current state accommodates. The bigger truck.
That's correct.
Why does it have to be changed for the smaller truck?
Again, this the city is proposing this uh, concept. Uh, you know, I've stated that the operations and the safety don't necessarily warrant a change, but. Uh, it's something that they want to do for a traffic calming aspect. And they we we coordinated on this and I said that a W B sixty-two is what we would have. And they should design it accordingly, and that's what they've they've shown on this plan.
Can I just ask a little follow-up here? So I'm I'm looking at Fitz Street. Pardon my eyeballs, Fitz Street turning on to. What am I, Strawberry Hills on to?
Strawberry Hill Avenue here.
What what about what about the Fitz Street turning on to East Avenue?
So when it comes to to tr- truck turning movements, the right-hand turn is oh, is always the the critical turning movement. The left turning movement coming out. Well, would easily fit in that area because they have a wider sweeping pattern. Uh, the reason why this roadway exists the way that it does is to facilitate this truck traffic. Right? The the wide radius here. Was was an acknowledgement that. All the other routes have either geometric or height restrictions that don't allow this larger vehicles to travel. So um, essentially, this 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 is your designated truck group by design.
But you're still talking about Fitch and Strawberry, right?
That's correct.
I'm talking about Fitch and East Avenue.
Oh, okay, that's the next slide. So Fitz Fitz uh, Avenue it or at East Avenue at Fitz Street, again. Not part of the study area, but uh, in 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 deference to the comments and the commentary, we did look at turning movements at this location. Uh, improvements are underdesigned by D O T in the city, as we've already talked about. The project will widen out East Avenue for four lanes to provide additional space for turning vehicles, which will provide additional space. So what we've shown here is in blue. That's the curb line that is proposed currently by the design that we received. Uh, the center line is this white dash line going down through here, and there's these figures are in our 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 submissions. And this shows the W B sixty-two movement making a right turn.
So based on this picture. The the truck has got to kind of be in the middle of the road on Fitz Street.
That's correct.
And then makes a right-hand turn on East Avenue and takes out both lanes on the way.
Right.
And that's a satisfactory turning radius?
Well, if I were to design this, I would have designed it with a wider curb curb in the corner there. There's there's room between the the right-of-way line, the blue line. And the yellow line to facilitate the truck traffic. When it when it comes to large vehicles physically fitting. Within within your side of the roadway is acceptable. So you have, you you are on your right side of the yellow line on Fitz Street. You're on the right side of your of the yellow line on East Avenue. Um, so it is an acceptable movement by by engineering standards, but. There is some opportunity here and some and some right-of-way to to make it a more satisfactory movement where. Uh, the turn lanes go. Further towards the right turn. Um, I also want to point out that this is the turning movement provided at the previous intersection by the city. It does travel through the bike lane. So that's something that is also uh. It would be ideal if we could move this truck to be within the bike lane and the right turn lane, which shares space. Right? The the right turning traffic has to cross over the bike lane. Uh, so if they're in front of the bike lane, that's acceptable, and then they can make the turn. And hopefully, the the curb line can be designed for that within that project.
And then what happens to the sidewalk in that situation?
They would have to rebuild it. So they'd have to, they'd have to make sure that they're providing a crossing that they're providing. Uh, with that meets the standards. So so you can see here, the. The right-of-way line right now is the yellow line, and they're they're they are already proposing. Uh, and it's a taking in order to widen East Avenue with this orange. So the new the new right-of-way line will be the orange to the yellow. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but so that sidewalk would in essence be on the church's property?
It would not be on the church's property. It'd be between the yellow line, which is the existing property line and and the blue line, right? You can move this. This blue line back and still provide a sidewalk before reaching the property line.
So um, I have a question. Actually, I have uh, three questions. Um, the first one is. What kind of material is being transported in these large trucks?
That's a question that the M T A is going to have to answer, and I I believe their plan is to speak after me. I I do have quite a few more slides to go through. It's it's, I guess we could, we could bring them up if you'd like, but.
Okay, so that's one question. All right. The second question is. Do you need the large trucks because you're hauling a large amount of volume? Or is it just like heavy machinery that you're bringing in?
So that's a, that's a question I can half answer, right? The W B sixty-two truck traffic that happens up to two times a week. That we're we're proposing is 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 bringing material to the site, right? And and maybe that's material that's too long to fit on a smaller vehicle. The actual regular traffic by the M C A vehicles is significantly smaller than these W B sixty-twos. Um, they fit within the existing intersections on this entire route. Um, and we've shown that in our in our documents, right? There's other turning movements provided in the response to Simco here. That show those movements uh, fitting within the roadway without any redesign or any improvements. So uh, in terms of moving the equipment that's going to be on the site and moving to the construction site, that can fit within the roadway without any changes.
Right, okay, and so are you also utilizing the facility as warehouse for storage of these materials?
Uh, again, that's M T A question, but there will be storage of materials on the site that's shown on the site plan.
That's being hauled by the trucks.
Right, but in a smaller quantity, correct?
Small quantity.
We've had, we've had detailed discussions about the operations and essentially they're. They're 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 putting materials on the site so they could use it as needed, right? So they have. Whatever the whatever the material may be. They have a bunch uh, delivered to the site by a larger vehicle and then taken as needed. So if they needed, if they needed more, they'd come back and get more, uh, or they bring it up the next day.
Forgive me just one additional question. Okay, so which which rail yard are you shipping from? Is it New Haven? Down to Norwalk? Was it New York up to Norwalk?
Again, I can't, I can't answer that question other than to say. I don't believe that they're shipping material between their facilities. That would not be efficient. They would, they would take the material that's stored on this site and bring it to the job site. They wouldn't take it from one rail yard to another.
Right, right. I'm just trying to figure out the flow of traffic, like. Why, why? I mean, if you're coming from New Haven. Coming from your yard in White Plains, North White Plains. Is there um, a. A more smaller way to do this?
Yeah, I think I think all many of your questions need to be addressed by by M T A and and they're here present today to answer those. Um, because I don't want to say something that's incorrect about their operations, but. That I I don't believe that they're sharing departments or materials across these sites, right? There. There are certain, there's sites that have certain departments.
Contained, each site has its own repair site and assembly site. Not sharing materials?
Again, you'd have to ask them. Um, and and I think they have, they have told us which. Of their services will be provided out of this location. I I believe that they're in the application material somewhere. Um, but that those would be. Utilizing this space. Um, I can't really speak to what would be traveling in between, and they'd have to answer that for you.
Uh, am I correct in uh, would in hearing that they will have up to two of the uh. W Bs sixty-two trucks accessing the site per week, up to two.
That is, that is the, that is the uh, the discussion that we had and the information they gave me. Um. And I will be talking more about the number of.
They're not coming, coming and going every day, like ten trucks a day.
That's correct. Their their goal, their goal, their operations plan, and they they've told me this, so I can I can report it. They store the materials on the site. Right? And they use it as needed, so. Their maintenance and and other working jobs, right? Something breaks, you gotta come, you gotta you gotta have stuff on hand to fix it. So they get it shipped to the site, they have it available when they need it, they take it and they bring it to the site, so. Um, that's why there's such a limited amount of. Truck traffic, the 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 larger truck traffic, the tractor trailer truck traffic to and from the site.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so in the interest of time, I'm going to continue. Um, and actually, look at the next slide, so. In terms of the truck traffic itself. Our report, and then this is the 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 table at the top is is the table in our report. This is typical maximum daily truck traffic, right? So this assumes that. All the trucks that are stored on the site are all the large vehicles stored on the site. All the the shipping and mail and deliveries and the and the garbage, that kind of thing. Come to and from the site, and those two deliveries all happen in the same day. They come to the site, they leave the site. That means that there's up to thirty-eight trips, truck trips per day. And 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 that includes all the thirteen vehicles stored on the site. As well as the 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 delivery trucks and the and the regular mail and shipping. So to to say that there's a fleet or there there's there's no fleet of anything, there's. There's different equipment that's put on different trailers that's attached to a dump truck. Some of these all go together, right? The the mini excavators go on the trailer, which then go on the dump truck. And we're assuming all of those coming to and from the site per day to get to the twenty-six. So so that's the list of of large vehicle traffic that they have. Um, you know, I've talked about it in the past about the the size of those and and what they are. Uh, they're basically anything larger than than an Amazon van, right? Anything that's like a box truck. Like a, like a FedEx box truck you'd see. Anything larger than that would be considered on this list. Um, so so if everybody came to and from the site on a day, there'd be thirty-eight. We don't expect that to happen, but that's just something that uh, we've put in there for to be conservative. On top of the fact that a lot of this equipment needs to go out to a job. They're not going to spend the money in the in the fuel to. Take the admin excavator out there every day when they need to work on something for a week. They're going to leave it out there. Uh, within the right-of-way. And 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 then not have these truck trips back and forth every day. So comparing that number to what actually exists on the on the roadways today in the study area. So we we've kind of both Norton Place and Strawberry Hill Avenue. There's there's over two hundred trucks of that size, anything over a box truck, right? Uh, on Norton Place in a day. There's over over six hundred. On Strawberry Hill Avenue. You can see the numbers at the bottom. So the truck traffic exists today. It's going to exist in the future. The roadways are designed for truck traffic purposely uh, through this area with their. With their um, functional classification arterials. Um, and. We've, well, I'll show in a few minutes, but but the safety, the safest analysis shows that. There's, there is no truck traffic collision pattern within the study area, the study area intersections. It does not exist. So.
Hey Craig, uh, can I interrupt you for just a minute? I have a question for the staff. And Steve, um, granted, there 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 may be an issue with policing, but um. Do we have a right? In um, if we approve this. Of indicating the number of uh, vehicles and types of vehicles. Um, on the on the property.
The the problem with that is if that. Vehicle makeup changes over time, you know, for. A different vehicle proves to be a better user, you need to bring in a different vehicle. It's a question of, uh, do you want them to have to come back and tell you every time they buy a new truck? Or they swap out something and they have six excavators versus two excavators? Is that? To what level of degree? I mean, I think if you had something that was like, uh, you know. And I'm just thinking up this quickly is like a percentage of large vehicles increases, maybe you could have them come back and verify that, but. That that's kind of hard to, unless we're out there every day kind of counting trucks, it's it's hard to get a handle.
I have one quick question. Um. I I understand the word existing. And I see existing daily volume. Does this say that on Norton Place today? There are fifty-one hundred and ninety-three cars in and out of there?
That's correct. Well, actually, there's fifty, there's fifty-four, fifty-three, ninety-seven is the total amount of traffic on Norton Place on a daily basis.
I was just talking about the cars, but.
Yeah, cars are fifty-one ninety-three. That's correct.
The, excuse me, and that's just from the Halsted formerly Avalon Building, not the new Corvall Nursery. Or the other yard that has a bunch of. Equipment trucks. I'm not sure. I can't remember the name of the company.
So we we counted those in uh, March, so whatever was existing in March was counted. Every vehicle was counted uh, on the roadway and in northbound and southbound.
It's on Norton Place, not on the property.
Yeah, not on the property.
On the property, this is on Norton, yes.
Norton Place Road.
Correct. Between the site driveways is where we we counted.
Thank you. Well, that that brings me to a a a new question. Um, why wasn't East Avenue considered in your traffic study?
So we essentially, uh, backtracking a few slides here. The study area was selected based on the guidelines, right? The Norwalk Traffic Impact and Assess, Access dot Assets Guidelines. And we coordinated with the Norwalk. T M P and 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 your peer reviewer ultimately, and and they agreed, we agreed upon the study area. That it was in excess of the requirements, right? That's based on our site traffic. The distribution of our site traffic, and and that's what it's based on, right? So. You have a certain number of vehicles going through an intersection in a peak hour. And you analyze that, that you you now include that if there's a, if it reaches a certain threshold. Which I believe to be twenty-five trips.
Right, but you're using East Avenue as as a. Wayfarer to get to your site and to exit your site.
I'm saying that, yes, that it is an access point to the site. That's correct, but if we chase this.
And an exit point from your site.
If we, if we chase the site traffic, like where does it end? We would have to analyze every intersection from. The the site driveway to the to the highway. And ultimately, once you reach a certain certain uh, level of traffic. There's, there's daily volume flows, there's there's minute flows that are different on a daily basis. I think if we went out there to. To our study area tomorrow and and the next day, we'd get a twenty-five trip difference between the two, so. So to say that the impact of this of this uh, use and and the small amount of traffic ultimately that we're we're showing. Um, we're conservatively making it higher to 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 assess that impact. But we're still seeing that.
Traffic with the trucks, you're also adding traffic with employees.
Right, and that's all included in our numbers. We we presented that at the last hearing. Uh, we're, and I'll show them at the end, but we're. We're looking at eighty, eighty peak hour trips total. Um, and and ultimately, most of this truck traffic that we're talking about is not traveling during those peak hours on purpose. They're traveling i- in the middle of the day. When there isn't congestion, when there isn't uh, school traffic in the area.
It's it's over and over again that you, you know, the. Summertime is when you really get a realistic snapshot of what it's like to travel on East Avenue.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna discuss that when I get to another slide, so I I will answer that question.
Mister Yan, to this slide. Um, in those conversations with T M P and A K R F. And everybody about which, about what parts of the study area should be covered. Was there an actual conversation about East Avenue and specifically and whether it should be included or not?
Yeah, yep. We talked about the the site traffic, we talked about our distribution, we showed them. what we, what we were proposing, right? We, we basically give the highlights of, of the uh, the assumptions or like the, the estimations that we're going to use. And then we showed that to them. And they, uh, we ultimately agreed on the study area, which again exceeds the guidelines, right? Strawberry Hill Avenue at Fitch did not meet the criteria in the guidelines and we added it in. And we also added in a, a midday peak period, which isn't, isn't an industry standard thing to do. If we had this type of use, we would be, would be concerned with morning and afternoon peak periods. Some of the traffic will be throughout the day, right? Which we, which we acknowledge, which is why we read to do of the analysis, but um, it's ultimately not, that would be not within the normal guidelines either. Okay.
I think Darius has a question.
Yeah, even though it wouldn't be within the normal guidelines and you all have exceeded it, what was the impetus for not including East Avenue?
The impetus is that it, it's not required and that there is another state project going on on that roadway to fix the, the deficiencies. If we analyze East Avenue and the, and the, there's four operations today. Our couple of trips is not going to significantly impact those. And AKRF kind of gave a framework of uh, five percent increase in delay. That's, that's the whole point of, of limiting your study area. Once you get under twenty-five trips, it's a daily variation of traffic. It's not going to result in a, in a large increase in that average uh, delay for each vehicle. So we could do the whole analysis and it still would show that there'd be a limited impact. Okay, so, so there were some commentary about the safe routes to school, um, which I, I wanted to address, um, like we kind of have already, um, the, the, we just talked about the truck traffic, so I'm not going to get into it again, but there, there are truck traffic on those routes. There, there are arterials and major arterials. A minor major arterial is designed for trucks. There's crossing guards posted um, in the school arrival and dismissal at key locations. The study area has a full sidewalk network. There are sidewalks on both sides of Strawberry Hill Avenue from Winfield Street to Route One, except for the east side. Uh, from Winfield Street to fourteen Strawberry Hill Avenue, and that is going to be addressed by a city project to install that sidewalk. Ultimately, there's no.
When is that project?
I don't have any information about the timeline. They didn't provide it.
Okay, thank you.
No schools were located within, within the traffic study area, area ultimately, right? We talked about that was approved by, by both groups. No schools are on the primary truck route with a proposed directional signage. There's no crash patterns or serious injuries or fatalities at the study area intersections. That's what we found in our data. And there's improvements that are going to be planned and constructed or, or have been constructed, right? There's the Strawberry Hill Avenue bridge replacement, which is done, new signals, crossings on all legs. There's further signal timing revisions that will be upcoming, that the city is going to under, undertake this in this year or next. The Strawberry Hill Avenue proposed improvements that we mentioned, the, the Strawberry Hill Avenue sidewalk that I just talked about. And then ultimately the East Avenue project, which, which has improvements to the corridor as well as uh, they're looking at improvements to the interchange.
And we don't have a timeframe for that.
Uh, that last project, the improvement project to the corridor is either in twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven is what they told me. Uh, ultimately, what happened there was it was supposed to be an early action project uh, as part of the walk bridge related to the walk bridge. And um, uh, there couldn't, there, there wasn't an agreement on what the scope of that improvement project would be between the community, uh, the municipality and, and the state, and that's why it was delayed. So that's, they're, they're looking, they, they have, they have a, a design, they're working through the design. I, I think we all concur with the design of the people that have uh, analyzed it throughout this uh, this study, right? On our end and, and on the peer review in this, in the city's end. Uh, so I want, so moving to that question of traffic volumes and the peak hours. Our team has had a lot of history with the site and, and we have several sets of information that we're pulling from. You can see them all listed there. So we're not just looking at one snapshot in time in February, March of twenty twenty-four. That is the basis of, of our analysis. It's the current conditions in the area. But we're looking at traffic volumes going back from two thousand eight until twenty twenty-three. Despite what has been said within the public comment here, there has not been significant traffic growth between two thousand eight and now. That's a fact. Um, that's in the traffic study. The perception of the traffic may have changed, but the actual traffic volume has not within the study area.
Why do you think the perception of the traffic would change? Like what would cause that?
Uh, possibly, uh, it's just conjecture. Uh, it would just be conjecture. People are home more often if they're working from home. Uh, there has been a little bit of spread of traffic, right? There's not just necessarily distinct peaks, although you will see that on the next slide. Um, so it, it's just something that people are more fo- focused on in the current environment. As I mentioned, we, we, we've analyzed three peak hours, weekday morning, midday and afternoon. And we've conservatively overlapped the MTA traffic with the local traffic and I'll show that in, in the next slide. Uh, the data includes all the different various uh, traffic types um, that we've had, um, that we, that we looked at. I just want to get my notes here. When it comes to looking at a, a study area during the summer season, that's something that is almost exclusively not industry standard to look at uh, traffic volumes during the summer period. For, for many reasons, there's just a complete variation in day-to-day traffic volume. Uh, based on the schools not being in session, based on residents and workers being on vacation. You generally see lower traffic volumes in the peak periods during those, uh, during the summer months. Um, so it's not something that we would generally analyze. Uh, we want to analyze for the bulk of the year, the eight, nine months of school um, period. And look at those typical weekday traffic volumes, and that's what we've done in this study. Um, you know, it, the, again, the peak hours, the traffic volumes have all been approved by AKRF and, and we've received no further comments from TNP. Um, and ultimately, the bottom line is that the amount of site traffic here is low, um, and the results that we present in our analysis show that there's not a significant impact to that delay. And that would be the same whether the traffic was, that, that there was a huge amount of delay or a low amount of delay. Um, and, and, and cherry picking or, or looking at one specific P period when everyone shows up to the beach at the same time is not what we would consider an industry standard practice to analyze. Uh, so looking at the actual volumes here, so the, the uh, orange being the Norton uh, place traffic and the blue being the Strawberry Hill Avenue traffic, these are the ones that we could conducted in, in March. You can see the peaks uh, that we've identified that we've analyzed, right? Approximately the, the, the three peaks there. You can see the shifts in the peak hours of the actual MTA traffic. Um, our, our analysis purposely and conservatively aligns those peaks on top of each other so that we, we present a conservative uh, approach. And um, that's what we've, we've uh, done and that's what we've shown to, to, to have no impact. Going to the safety review, again, something I presented last time. No significant injuries, if, or fatalities reported at the intersections within the data we reviewed. Three of the collisions and I want to, I'm going to back out for a second to get my notes. Apologize. Words goes backwards. So of those, of those three uh, collisions involving bicyclists or pedestrians, uh, one occurred at Beacon Street where a pedestrian was struck in the crosswalk. That was property damage only. Um, the pedestrian was then found to be under the influence of alcohol, drugs or drugs or medication. Uh, one occurred at Norton Place in Strawberry Hill Avenue. Um, the pedestrian was start, struck within the roadway, not in a crosswalk. That resulted in a minor injury. Uh, similarly, the pedestrian was found to be under the influence of drugs, alcohol or medication. And then the third collision happened at Triangle Street and, and uh, Winfield Street where a bicy- bicyclist actually uh, struck a pedestrian in the sidewalk, which resulted in possible injury to the cyclist. Um, the collision happened in twenty eighteen. Um, and since then bicycle lanes and sharrows have been added to Winfield Street. Uh, so, so we feel that that's been adequately addressed. We don't, we don't see any reason to do anything different than uh, any, any other infrastructure changes to address those, that could address those collisions. In terms of the truck traffic, we've looked through the records. There's a full record of every vehicle that's been involved in the collisions. Only three of them involve trucks within the, within the data analyzed. So three of the thirty-six that we, that we looked at. One was a fork, forklift hitting a utility pole. Uh, property damage only, no other vehicles or anyone else was involved. Uh, a second was a rear end into a trailer, so a passenger vehicle struck a trailer. Um, that was driving down the roadway, a rear end collision, property damage only. And then the last one uh, was at twenty-six Fitch Street, so close to the um, Strawberry Hill Avenue intersection where a box truck was backing into the roadway and struck a vehicle. So, so none of these are, can be addressed by infrastructure changes, um, and, and we in, in all cases, there are minor injuries or property damage only. The sidewalk area, uh, side, study area has sidewalks and bike lanes and shared lane markings uh, to facilitate any bicycle and pedestrian traffic. And ultimately, we didn't find any collision patterns of, of significance. And I'm just going to turn this back off again.
Mr. Yang, do you know the distance from um, Beacon Street up Strawberry Hill to Heather Lane, which is approximately across from the entrance to the m- middle school?
I do not know that distance. I can, I can get it uh, later on in the presentation if that's, if that's needed.
Okay, I can drive it myself and figure it out, but I just thought you could go it off the top of your head. Thank you.
Yeah. So, um, another thing that I want to, want to know about this is this is a good thing. Ultimately, every study area intersection and even those surrounding have been or will be uh, improved in the short term here. Um, that's good news for the residents. There's investment both privately and publicly in the study area. As you'll see by this list, um, they, they address, address existing deficiencies, facilitate future traffic streams and ultimately facilitate the growth of the area as, as been mentioned in the public process. So just running through the list quickly, um, the Strawberry Hill Avenue Bridge was replaced, the signals were replaced. They're all brand new. Um, they're all industry standard. They're all state of the art. The city is going to do further timing improvements there. Uh, Winfield Street at Triangle Street, uh, so the southern intersection, the signal was recently replaced in the last uh, seven years. Um, the Win- Winfield Street, as I mentioned, got bike lanes and shared lane markings. That's completed. Uh, there's, there's a list of four things in the center that we've talked about, the applicant uh, providing. So that's the radar speed signs on Norton Place and the crosswalk striping across the driveways. Uh, the do not block the intersection designation, uh, which um, there was some commentary about that. Uh, what I have to say to that is if, if it's not something that uh, the, the public and the commission deems appropriate, we, we don't need to put it in. Uh, what it does do uh, is, is keep people out of the intersection, keep the traffic flowing. It does require enforcement. It does have a, a summons available. Police need to, if, if they have trouble uh, stopping a vehicle, they, they need to instruct them to a safe area, right? Emergency vehicles go through these roadways all the time and uh, they have lights and flashers. If they need to pull someone over, they need to find a safe spot and, and give the summons. Um, that's something that they should do. The, the, uh, we're also proposing I ninety-five directional signage. I showed the plan uh, last time I spoke. Uh, which directs people to, on the most direct route between the site and the highway. As I also mentioned in the last meeting, there's other routes that they can take if, if, if vehicles can fit. Um, the six-month traffic follow-up, which, which we're, we're willing to do and, and, and expect to, to be asked to do if approved. And then there's the three planned uh, improvements or, or two of them we've talked about and one extra. There's improvements to this, the Strawberry Hill Avenue at Fitch Street intersection and the Strawberry Hill Avenue sidewalks planned by the city. The East Avenue Improvements Project and the Interstate Interchange Improvements with I ninety-five, that's in design and or planning. And then the last piece, which actually just came out recently is uh, is the city received a, a Safe Streets for All grant to prepare a safety action plan. Um, and this is a great thing. This is something that Time Bonds involved in in many communities uh, throughout the state. Putting together a plan, uh, a, a detailed plan, getting funding from the federal government uh, to, to prepare a safety action plan for the entire city. It's something that the city should take advantage of. A lot of the challenges and issues that are existing that you've outlined here can be addressed by that plan, can be planned for by that plan. And, and the funding ultimately, if the funding that they've received so far allows you to prepare that plan, but once you have that plan, you could then ask for more money to implement the improvements. So it's a really positive thing and, and definitely another mechanism outside of the, the uh, local traffic authority and the TNP Department, um, you know, operations where you can, you can consider improvements. This is now another funding mechanism. Um, and there's no lack of funding available for safety improvements and sidewalk improvements that have been mentioned within the public process here.
Craig, I would interrupt your question staff. Uh, Steve, uh, the six-month traffic uh, follow-up. If we, if, if, if that shows an anomaly or a problem um, uh, that wasn't uh, part of the original uh, work that was done, something that needs to be addressed. Um, do we uh, have um, any authority to see that that gets done by the applicant?
I, so I, I think that would largely depend on what the outcome of that evaluation was and what aspect was contrary to what they had proposed and what we thought the outcome was going to be. So I think we couldn't use.
Keep up a little bit, I'm sorry.
Sure. So that would depend largely on what the actual discrepancy was between what they thought was going to happen and what the end result was. Um, so we'd have to see what that actually was before we make a decision. I think if it turned out something that was very detrimental, I think we could, you know, could we say it's a violation of the or inconsistent with what the approval was or violation of the site point approval? I'd have to think about that a little bit more. Um, I, I think it definitely would impact what their future intent or occupation of the site might be, because it would, you know, if, if things were worse or the volumes were significantly greater than they had forecast, then that would, you know, take away their ability to populate the rest of the building.
Right. Hey, can I um, a- ask the staff to think about that and see if there is um, i- i- in the event that we uh, uh, approve it, uh, that uh, there is language that uh, uh, could address that.
Certainly, okay.
All right, uh, I apologize, Craig.
No prob- no problem.
Please continue.
Yeah, no problem at all. Um, I have two more slides left. One, this one uh, about the direct access to I ninety-five that was, was mentioned. So, um, in order to put an interchange on uh, an, an expressway, an interstate, uh, it requires both review and approval by FHWA's National Regional Office as well as DOT. The planning process uh, required, it has to be adopted into the uh, NPL, the Metropolitan Planning Organization's Transportation Improvement Plan, also called the TIP, uh, which is a big thing. Based on a review of the FHWA regulations, it's unlikely that DOT or FHWA would uh, determine that this site in particular would warrant a new access. Um, it also can't be just a direct access to the site. It has to allow local area traffic to, to go through a public right-of-way. The property on the north side is not owned by the applicant, so there's no way to guarantee that the uh, public right-of-way that can be even designated, um, because they do not own it. And, and ultimately, this is a regional planning uh, responsibility, is not a responsibility of an applicant for private development. Um, there's been requests in the past, something, an anecdote that I shared last time. When the Patriots were planning a stadium i- in Hartford, they asked for a direct access to the interstate and were denied. So uh, the level is, is significant. There's spacing requirements between the interchanges, there's safety and operational impacts uh, to the interstate when you add an interchange. Um, this really isn't something that can be entertained. Um, it also could increase the traffic flow in the area by allowing people to, another access point to East Norwalk in and out, um, and driving through uh, this area. Um, ultimately, nor, it would have to land on Norton Place, right? Which, which is not a minor arterial, it's not a major arterial like East Avenue. So it's not really even appropriate to uh, put an interchange to a street of that designation. Okay, um, so then the last, the last slide here, um, you know, this kind of summarizes all the different uh, things you've heard about traffic from me and, and from others. Uh, ultimately, the out, analyses we presented meet or exceed industry standards. We've selected the study area and the peak hours and the traffic volumes and everything else with in, in consultation with the TN, with TNP, with their, with your peer reviewer. Um, you know, you have the size of the facility. Um, you know, you have the size of the facility, you have the peak hour trips, right? Which I mentioned before, eighty in the morning and the afternoon, forty in the midday. Uh, no concerns arising of the safety review. The trucks are, you know, traverse routes that are designed for truck traffic and have truck traffic. There's minimal, minimal operational impacts. And um, and we, we mentioned the proposed improvements already. Uh, these in analyses incorporate all the comments we received to date. They've been appear, approved by the peer reviewer A K R F and we've received no further uh comments from T N P. Um, so I, I hope that addresses almost every comment I could think of, um, I'm willing to answer any other questions you might have.
Are there any uh further questions? And if there are not, uh, Attorney Sachi, I think we're going to uh close the hearing for this evening and uh continue it uh at our June fifth meeting.
That's fine. Thank you, June, June fifth.
I believe it is June fifth.
That would probably just be virtual, right?
I don't see why not, uh. Um, once again, uh, we have um, uh, just a little bit of business, approval of um minutes.
Don't think we got those out.
Oh, well, we have received so much material over the last week or so. That's fine, then uh we can, uh, we can forego that. Comments of um, the director?
Nothing further tonight.
You wanna, you wanna say, uh, take this opportunity to say something about uh, uh, the meeting on the thirtieth?
Oh, yeah, we don't have a meeting before, yeah, thank you, it's a good idea. So there is an enforcement kind of seminar, public meeting on the thirtieth, which is a Thursday night at six P M in the community room. Um, all city staff that are, well, not all city staff, all city departments that are involved with enforcement issues, mainly focused on quality of life kind of issues, will be there to present and answer questions, um, followed by like specific breakout table areas where if you have very specific questions about like what's going on with your street, with your neighbor, you can ask those at that time, so probably about a two hours. We'll see how it goes.
That's sixth, though, right?
Mr. Haydock, you gonna be there?
Yes.
Will it be on Zoom?
The first hour will be on Zoom, but when it's out for the breakout tables, we can't, there'll be like six tables.
Comments from any of the commissioners? Um, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate your, your patience. Uh, this is an important decision, we have never uh spent this much time on a single uh project, uh, other than the rewrite. So I, I, I do appreciate all the time that everyone's been uh putting in on this. Uh, and I'm, I hope that on the June fifth meeting, we can um, move to uh at least uh discuss and maybe reach a decision uh on, on the project.
So, at the ne- at the June fifth meeting, since the public hearing is closed, can you just give us the process again and then assure us that we as commissioners are going to have the opportunity to dialogue amongst ourselves?
Well, sure, um, we need to uh listen to the rest of Attorney Sachi's uh response. Um, her, her experts, after which we close the public hearing and um discuss action. Um, and I don't see any reason um why that meeting on the fifth couldn't uh just be virtual, um, as we've done for most of our meetings. Uh, and, you know, perhaps on, on the fifth, we reach a decision. If not, uh, go to our next meeting.
Do we have a regular agenda on that?
Yes, we do, yeah, including the one item that we pushed off to June fifth, but that should be important. Okay, any other comments, questions from commission members?
We haven't seen, I think, very often where the applicant rebuttal following the public comment includes sort of almost like additional presentations from all the different experts. Is it the case that they're not supposed to provide any new information in this rebuttal, they're just supposed to be answering the questions raised during the public hearing, or can they provide new information?
Well, there, there may have been questions raised that require new information, uh, that's certainly possible. Um, but beyond that, I'm not, I don't think uh, uh, there, there, you know, should be uh entirely new information provided.
No, they, they, i- if, if you went through, had a chance to go through the emails today, there were, and some of them were repeat questions that were already asked, but there were many people uh that sent we wanted answers to the specific question, so they're, they're responding to those questions. Um, but most of all, that, that's included in, within their rebuttal.
Thank you.
So they're not doing like going out and collecting new, um, a whole new set of traffic data and then presenting that. It's, here's a, this data was presented previously, but I'm answering this question raised in response to something.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, any, any other comments from commission members? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Richard has moved and Galen has seconded, all those in favor? I see a lot of hands up, we're adjourned. Again, thank you all.